Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, April 4th, 2016, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. At this time, if you would please stand and join us as troop number 31 leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. These students are from a number of our different middle and elementary schools, and they're going to come forward right now.
(Clerk) I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay, would you all please join Vice President Williams as she leads us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement?
The OPS Vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission: Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Fay.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Underwood.
Vargas.
Here.
Wayne. Williams.
Present.
Five present.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to excuse the members who are not present. Mrs. Underwood had a work commitment this evening. Ms. America is attending a schools conference today. And Mrs. Fay will arrive at about 7:15, I think, and then Mr. Snow believes he'll be here around 7 o'clock as well. Motion by Mr. Wayne, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vargas. Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
Scanlon.
No.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Four aye, one no.
Motion carries. We will now have public comment. What do we have? Should we do school spotlight? It's not on my agenda, but I think we should do school spotlight first. So we're going to go ahead and do school spotlight. I apologize. My computer is not functioning right now, so...
Madam President, members of the Board, we have two school spotlights for this evening. We first begin by recognizing three OPS state champion wrestlers, Burke High School Junior, Joey Harrison, Burke High School freshman, James Burke, and Northwest High School Senior, John Feeney.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. We just lost our quorum. So as soon as Mr. Wayne comes back, I apologize. Okay, he's back in the room, so I apologize.
No worries.
Go ahead and start from the top, so we're right where we're supposed to be.
Sure. We have two school spotlights for this evening. We first begin by recognizing three OPS state champion wrestlers, Burke High School Junior, Joey Harrison, Burke High School freshman, James Burke, and Northwest High School Senior, John Feeney. The Nebraska School Activities Association State Wrestling Championships were held at Century Link on February 18th through 20th. These three student athletes are Class A state champions in their prospective weight classes. We salute all three wrestlers and welcome these students, their coaches, and principals.
We want to have you come forward.
Members of the Board of Education, Mr. Evans, I'd like to introduce you James Burke. He is a freshman of the 132 weight class with a record of 52 and 3. And I'd like to introduce you to Joey Harrison. He's a junior, weight class 106, with a record of 54 and 0. We're very proud of them, and they're state champs at Burke High School.
Wow, that's impressive. Thank you, gentlemen. We grabbed photos earlier, so we may try to get some of them back with the larger group. I have the second spotlight for this evening. So March is Youth Art Month.
We still need to do the Northwest student, I think, right? Or did you? Did he get covered? I think we just covered the two Burke students, so...
Oh, John Feeney, is he not up here?
Right here.
Right here. Yes. Right here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Were you gonna?
Did you have something to say? Go ahead.
Well, sure. That's the first time you've ever been quiet in our radio.
No, just wanted to thank you guys for recognizing John Feeney. Joey and James, I've been knowing these guys since they were younger, little kids too. It's just, it's an honor to see these guys do what they did and accomplish the type of things they did. John Feeney is Omaha Northwest only the third two-time state champion in schools history. And he finished his season, this year, 37 and 1. His one loss was to a kid from out of state. He has not lost to anybody from the state of Nebraska in two years.
Wow, that's impressive. Well, gentlemen, we would like to have you come around and shake everyone's hands along with your coaches. And how about if we have all the coaches who are here come around and join us?
Those are impressive records, very impressive records, because it's a lot of wrestling, and that's a lot of wins. I will welcome Ms. Monique Farmer back to the podium.
Sorry about that, moving too fast. Okay, Youth Art Month. We have 16 billboards featuring OPS student artwork on display across the metro. Schools have sponsored, schools that have sponsored billboards are Ashland Park Robbins, Benson High School, Benson West, Bryan Senior, Burke, Castalar, Chandler View, Integrated Learning Program, Indian Hills, JP Lord, Kellum, Lothrup, Miller Park, Picot, Skinner Magnet, and Wakanda. A reception for the students, sponsors, teachers, and families will take place April 26th in the fourth-floor gallery at the Tac Building from 4:30 PM to 5:30 PM. Tonight, we're also showcasing our national scholastic art. I believe there may be a slide. I'm going to try to put it on the screen. There was supposed to be a visual here. Okay, I'm going to skip that, that's not working for me. OPS students received over 90 regional gold keys on March 14th. National awards were announced, and OPS received two national gold medals and six national silver medals. We have asked the students here today with Ms. Angie Fisher, the art supervisor. She will tell you a little bit more about the awards and introduce the students and the art educators.
President Gadding, Superintendent Evans, and members of the Board, thank you for allowing us to showcase the visual arts during today's meeting to celebrate Youth Art Month. As you see, we have some fantastic work, or you may have seen around the city, for the billboards, thanks to several sponsors, the Omaha Schools Foundation and Lamar Advertising. We invite you to join us on April 26th to celebrate with student artists, teachers, and families from 4:30 to 5:30 in the Tac Gallery on the fourth floor. This year, we added five new schools and hope to keep the program growing in the future. Our spotlight students this evening are our national scholastic art gold and silver medalists. A little background about the process of how we got here. OPS and the Art Department have been the Nebraska Regional Affiliate for Scholastic Art since 2009. We have hosted a statewide competition and exhibition since 2004. Entries from all over the state are submitted digitally and based on, and judged by local artists, retired educators, professionals, and college instructors. Each work is judged by, is judged based on technical skill, originality, and personal vision. The second floor features 7th, 8th, and 9th grade work. The third floor features senior portfolios, and the fourth and fifth floor features 10th, 11th, and 12th grade works. All regional gold key works are judged then nationally, and as Ms. Farmer mentioned, on Monday, March 14th, the national scholastic awards were announced. The gold medal awardees are invited to national events in New York City and a celebration at Carnegie Hall in early June. Gold medal works are also on display in New York at Parsons School of Design at the New School and Pratt Institute's Pratt Manhattan Gallery. The iconic Empire State Building will be lit in gold to honor the 2016 Scholastic Art and Writing National Medalists the evening of June 2nd. Please welcome and help congratulate the following students as we display their work on the screen. And here's a very fast preview of the billboard. Aide Mu from Benson High School is a national gold medal award winner. She won a gold medal for her drawing and illustration Through My Eyes, and it is currently on display on the fourth floor, but will be going very soon to New York for the national exhibition. Emma Monahan is not here tonight, but she has another national gold medal from Central High School for her drawing and illustration South Island. Brianna Running is here today from Burke High School, and she won a national silver medal for her art portfolio, character, and design. Melanie Breyek, also from Central High School, won a national silver medal for her ceramics and glass. Sarah Skolaski is another student from Central High School with a national silver medal, and she's here today for our board meeting for her work in painting, and this is also on display on the fourth floor. Ethan Jendrow is here with us today. He won a national silver medal for his Infinity teapot in ceramics and glass. Frank Hutter, national silver medal for drawing and illustration Touch. And Axel Cervantes Ayala from Mars Magnet Middle School also won a national silver medal. Congratulations, and thank you for being here. If the teachers and the parents and family that are here, please stand, so we can thank you for coming and supporting the students. And I invite, if the Board has any questions for the students, please do so.
Does anyone have any questions? I have one. When did the process start?
The registration process for the Nebraska Regional Exhibition and Competition opened in September. Our deadline was early January, and we judge for five or six days the Nebraska works. And this is from our regional ceremony that was held here on February 27th. So you can see statewide all the award winners.
That's awesome. You had a period of time where you needed to accomplish your work. Great. Does anyone else have any questions? If not, we would like to invite you to come around and shake our Board, the Board members' hands and congratulate you. So we'll start with the Treasurers' Report. Mrs. Kenoke.
I'd like to present to you the Treasurers' Report for February of 2016.
Thank you very much. If anyone has any questions, if you'd please get those to Mrs. Kenoke. Next, we'll have the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. One, just looking at the spotlight tonight, I'm thinking about next board meeting when we'll have the state champion South High Packers recognized here for their state title, of which they ran away with this year. Also, I'd like to thank Angie Fisher, before Angie leaves, for all the work of posting all the artwork throughout the Tac Building. If you have a chance, all the folks that are here in the audience, really encourage you to walk around the student art that was recognized tonight. Those are on the fourth floor, except for Brianna. I think Brianna's on the third floor, and everybody else on the fourth floor, but there is some of the most incredible artwork. Just walk through the building. This time of year, I always look forward to it, but I know that takes a lot of work to pin up and display all of that artwork, so thank you for that. I think it's a great display, and I hope folks in the audience get a chance to walk around and see our talented young people. So thank you again. And next, I'd like to recognize Goodwill Industries. I'm going to pass this around, but it has some pictures of some of our young people that are transitioning with Goodwill Industries. Recently, we had an article in the paper about some of the transition programs and some of the, actually, a trip they're going to take, that's a pretty significant trip, where they're developing life skills in multiple ways. But the Goodwill Industries is a wonderful partner with us, and there's some pretty special young people that are part of that program. And next, I'd like to just kind of update to the Board and the community. We had a community member meetings for our curriculum, for HGD updates, and I want the Board to know and community to know, we had approximately 25 participants in every one of the meetings, so not quite as many as we would have thought, but we did have participation, and we do have all the feedback from those groups, and we'll be bringing that back to the Board at a later date. I also wanted to congratulate our new OEA president, and I believe she's here tonight, Bridget Donovan. Bridget, you might want to wave to the crowd. Congratulations on the election last week. And I also wanted to introduce tonight Cecilia Carter. She's our new Director of OSERS. We had a retirement of Mr. Michael Smith, Cecilia Carter, if we could recognize you. Thank you for joining us in OSERS, and I'm sure we'll get an opportunity to hear you at the podium in the not-too-distant future, so we'll look forward to that as well. I also wanted to point out the Council of Great City Schools, the Urban Educator articles that came out this week. There's a piece where the Executive Director, the Council, Mike Casserly, the Council is sponsoring a national summit for principal supervisors. I'm going to pass this around to the school board members. They have asked us to present on principal supervisors, so we'll be having some staff presenting nationally on principal supervisor and development of leadership. So I thought that was an interesting piece, to have that come out at this time. And finally, no, I guess that was the end of what I had here. So I appreciate the time to give the update to the Board. Thank you so much, and that's all I have, Madam President.
All right. Do any other Board members have comments that they would like to share this evening? If not, I will note that on your Board Agenda, under the Information and the Action items, you will see that we have the new format that staff is using to provide information to us, designed around some of those key questions that folks have had before. And so if you have suggestions for changes, please let either Mr. Ray or myself know as we work through this. And then Mr. Vargas.
All right. Thank you, President Gadding. So three events I was able to attend. The first is, and I've mentioned this before here, and I'm just amazed by the leadership of our, some of our staff, and not only our bilingual staff, our liaisons, but also some of our community efforts. We have the Thrive Leadership Club, which is in the majority of our high schools, and it is particularly a leadership club, started off with refugee sort of empowerment, leadership development, inclusivity, and it has just grown like wildfire across the entire district. And this event, was this last Saturday, which is basically a cultural event honoring the different cultures that are in our district, you know, through food, through dance, through celebration, culminating in a very big event in the South High, in the South High Auditorium. And it's just a packed house, and it's getting overall, we're going to have to figure out some way to fit them. It's standing room only at this point. And I think that's amazing, seeing the parents and families so engaged in acknowledging and respecting the individual differences of the cultures of our district. It's exactly what we want to see. I'm just honored by it, and very thankful to those that are working on Thrive, and our staff members that support that, and our district for supporting efforts like this is a big deal. I don't think that's a very typical program that you see across many other districts of our size. I echo the South High, the basketball champions. I was able to, I was actually on, I was in Lincoln on the court watching them pretty much, pretty handily win this, but there were still some tense moments even in the last game. So just a big shout-out to South High, Packers, the whole coaching staff, all our staff members, and Principal Kano. Also wanted to, we have a partnership with Inclusive Communities. It's one of the nonprofits we work with there in many of our schools. They had a brunch this week, this last weekend, and with Omaha Schools Foundation, several of us Board members were there as representatives, also just being very supportive of the leadership development that Inclusive Community does, to make sure we are a more inclusive community, that we are building the leadership development, making, you know, breaking down what identity and leadership really looks like for our students, and not just creating one archetype of leadership is very, very important. And last, I just want to echo the congratulations to OEA's new president, Bridget Donovan. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comment, and we have a number this evening. So what I will do is I will give the name, and I'm going to tell you the information you need to know, and I won't necessarily repeat that each time, but we'll, I'll keep you informed. So our first public comment is from Susan Feyenray. You have five minutes to speak, so if you would please state your name, the spelling of your last name, your address, and then Mr. Ray will keep you informed at 1 minute and at 30 seconds to go.
Okay, great. My name is Susan Feyenray, and it's spelled F as in Frank, E-Y-E-N dash R-E-A-Y. I live at 5919 Jones Street. I'm here on behalf of UNO and also as an OPS parent with UNO at 62nd Dodge Street. Did I get all that? Did I miss anything?
You got it.
Social Security number, date of birth, okay, no. I think you're pretty sure you got all that on me anyway, as an OPS parent. So I'm here to talk about the importance of social work in schools, and then to provide you with some information about what social workers do. As a very active and involved OPS parent, by the way, shout-out for Washington Elementary in Marion's District, wonderful staff and social workers. But as a OPS parent, I've seen the need for some social workers in the schools to assist with things. You know, sometimes I've seen some issues such as a little girl who's washing out her clothes in the sink at school because her family doesn't have a washer and dryer, and then the PTO and the school trying to figure out ways to help this family, which would be a perfect role for a social worker to be engaged. As a parent, it's not my role to interject in that setting in the school, but I could see as a social worker what the need would be for that. I've also been a part of the Parent Advisory Committee for OPS, and I know the importance that you have on improving your outreach for families and with the community, as well as the reducing the number of days that special ed kids are out of school, particularly minority students. Those are all initiatives that social workers could be a big part of. Social workers are great at doing social marketing campaigns, as well as connecting and engaging with people, doing outreach and community work. Our ability as social workers to work on those initiatives in the community make us a very unique profession that really cannot be done in other ways. We want our teachers, of course, to be focused on educating, and that role of social work to be done in the correct way as well. Other initiatives, in my work at UNO, we offer lots of classes on school social work. We are very supportive of the great social work staff that you have here at OPS, and we're hopeful that you will be willing to look at the other needs of social work and look at the proposals to increase the number of social workers. Some of our social work students from UNO are working with your social work staff on things like a whole campaign on teen pregnancy, and looking at the number of absences for those teen pregnant parents, as well as different initiatives with working with immigrants, trying to work with individuals and their families who are new to the United States and do not speak English well, or have the support of the community. Other school districts that I work with, because we have social work students all over the state, their social workers are doing screenings for suicide on every single student at the junior high and high school, triaging that and determining what kids need to be referred out for services. They're doing other things, making sure that kids are going home with food and with different ideas for community partners that could assist them and their families. So they are fulfilling the mission of the school to make sure every child is there and ready to participate in school for that day. The UNO school's social work is very supportive of OPS, and we are very willing to continue that partnership in every way that we can to help support the social work staff that you have, and any initiatives to further those numbers of social workers within your school setting.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jeanne Klein, and then after Jeanne, we will have Mary Bany. So Jeanne, you have five minutes, and if you could state your name, the spelling of your last name and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Jeanne, G-E-N-E, Klein, K-L-E-I-N. I'm the Executive Director of Project Harmony, representing Project Harmony tonight. Our address is 11949 Q Street. I'm here to speak about Project Harmony as an organization and how we interface with the schools in our community on two levels in particular. On a monthly basis, the Child Abuse Hotline, which is located at Project Harmony, takes about 7,000 calls a month. Those are calls that are from the statewide hotline, and those are individuals, parents, professionals, mostly schools, that are concerned about children. Less than 1,000 of those calls actually meet the threshold for child malt treatment. That means that there are about 6,000 calls monthly where people are concerned about kids and not sure what to do, but the state's role is to not, to screen that call out and to push it back to the caller. Many times, a social worker can play a critical role in how that family is served, hopefully in a preventative way, but if there is an interface with Child Protective Services, a social worker is a key relationship builder there. The second component, again, this is in speaking to support your expansion of social workers, is the Connections Program, which we started in 2015. Project Harmony is in a collaboration with three school districts right now, Papillion Schools, Millard Schools, and 28 elementary schools in OPS, where schoolteachers and counselors and principals identify children in need of behavioral health services. Last year, we served about 800 children and linked them to over 50 providers in the metro area, and from not just OPS, but those other two districts as well. And our experience was pretty clear, those schools that had social workers, in particular in Millard and in Papillion, where there's a school social worker in that building, those families were much more engaged in wanting help. Those families were ready and willing to get that help, and the numbers of referrals, frankly, were much higher in the schools where there were social workers. We believe it's because those social workers really knew the families, they were connected to those families, and they trusted the school to link them to agencies in the community. So on behalf of Project Harmony, we would really encourage you to support the expansion of social workers within the district.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mary Bany, and after Ms. Bany is Stacy Horsham.
OPS Board members, good to be with you. OPS Board Members, good to be with you tonight. My name is Mary Bany, B-A-H-N-E-Y, and I live at 2017 South 141st Circle. And I'm here to speak in support of the proposed grant from the Sherwood Foundation for social workers in the Omaha Public Schools. I'm a retired school social worker, and I worked for Millard Public Schools. I was originally hired using some of the early lottery money, a grant was put in for that, and funding from one of the first round, or maybe second round, of the early childhood grants that the Nebraska Department of Education offered. Through the years, my position was funded by a variety of sources. I never was paid out of the general fund. I was paid by, what, I think the lottery funds evolved into QEIP funding, I was paid under Title I, I was paid under Special Ed Flex funding. I was originally hired to work in the area of early childhood, and eventually, I moved on to working full-time with the elementary schools in Millard. I worked on attendance issues, assisting families with community resources, and a variety of other issues to enhance the opportunity for students' success in the classroom. During my time in Millard, I worked with families from all elementary schools in the school district. Other school districts that I, school social workers I've touched base with over the last few days in the state of Nebraska have told me that they have been employed in their positions that have been funded by Title I, truancy, diversion grants, the Recovery Act, Drug Free Schools Act, Safe Schools, and special ed funding. So, it isn't unusual at all for social workers to be employed and have grant funding by, through the school districts. One source of revenue for school social workers could be the Medicaid in Public Schools Program. The types of services that school social workers provide was expanded in 2014, the bill number in 2013 and 14 was LB 276, to provide additional related services as laid out in IDEA, and that would be a potential funding source. The National Association of Social Workers is the largest professional social work association in the nation, and it recognizes school social workers as a subset of the profession. It supports school social workers by publishing a journal specifically targeted for school social workers. It has a subsection for school social workers, and it has also provided national standards for school social workers. And in my years as a school social worker, I had one major goal in everything I did, and that goal was the ultimate success of the students in the classroom. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Stacy Horsham, and after Ms. Horsham, we have Tara Masick, I believe.
Thank you for your time. My name is Stacy Horsham, S-T-A-C-Y, last name Horsham, H-O-R-S-H-A-M, and I reside at 18428 Harney Street. And I'm speaking also in support of the opportunity of hiring additional social workers in Omaha Public Schools. And I'm speaking on behalf of the School Social Work Association of Nebraska, also known as SWAN, as the current president of that association. The School Social Work Association of Nebraska is dedicated to promoting the profession of school social workers and the professional development of school social workers in order to enhance the educational experience of students and families. Our goal is to promote service delivery models that will empower children, families, schools, and communities to be effective partners in the learning process. The School Social Work Association of Nebraska develops and maintains collaborative relationships with various local, state, and national associations, organizations, and educational institutions for the purpose of meeting the needs of children and families. The School Social Work Association of Nebraska is one of 11 state associations, a part of a larger Midwest Council of School Social Workers who facilitate the educational professional growth of school social workers as a whole. The Association meets on a quarterly basis to ensure best practices, provide professional development opportunities to current school social workers, and practice experiences for future school social workers. There are approximately 25 school social workers employed in the districts outside of Omaha Public Schools, including Miller, Papillion, Bellevue, Ralston, and Westside Public Schools. Lincoln Public Schools employs approximately 29 school social workers, Grand Island Public Schools, 14, Carney Public Schools, three, and Columbus, two. The profession of school social work has grown in numbers, and the qualifications for the profession has grown more complex over time. Most states require a master's degree, school social work licensure, or special certification to work in the school setting. Whereas the specific roles and responsibilities of a school social worker may slightly vary based on the district, the overall work that we do is to ensure that children achieve in academic environments regardless of their race, disability, gender, or economic status. School social workers continually work to reduce barriers for learning for students by navigating service delivery systems for health, mental health, child welfare, juvenile justice, to promote and sustain learning in the classroom. Overall, school social workers ensure that children's social, emotional, and physical needs are being met so that they are ready to learn in the classroom, thus allowing teachers to do what they do best, teach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tara Masick, or Masick, hopefully I got that right.
It's Tara Masick, M-A-S-E-K, and my address is 13413 Redwood Street, Omaha. And I'm here speaking in support of school social workers also. I've been a school social worker and worked in the school system for over 10 years. I'm the past president of the School Social Work Association of Nebraska, and I also currently teach the school social work class at the University of Nebraska at Omaha. School social workers work to promote and support students' academic and social success. I have seen personally firsthand the positive impacts that school social workers can make in the lives of students and families. Working with a homeless family to help make sure that the student gets to school, has food and clothing, and a place to stay so that that student can focus on school, providing signs of suicide curriculum to high school students to teach them about the signs of depression, what to watch for, and then being able to be a support and intervene with students when they have concerns or worries about their peers. Helping families overwhelmed by mental health issues find quality providers in the community that have training and expertise in the specific area that they need. Children today are increasingly facing many social forces that negatively affect their role as students, things like crisis, poverty, mental health and substance use issues, life adjustments, and lack of resources. Anytime a child has any unmet physical, emotional, or mental health need, it interferes with their ability to learn and adjust in school. This can greatly impact their educational experience and result in poor educational outcomes. School social workers work as part of an interdisciplinary team, including school psychologists, counselors, administrators, nurses, and teachers, to meet the needs of all students. School social workers gather information from students, teachers, and parents to identify needs that interfere with learning, and work with the students to get them the services they need. Maybe there is something that has recently happened in their life, like a fire, or a family facing homelessness, or a death of a family member. School social workers are trained mental health professionals who meet the needs of students outside of the classroom. They build assets and reduce risks so that students can be fully present to their academic potential. School social workers are educated to understand the interplay of systems and the impact that those systems have on academic achievement. As school social workers, we take into account the physical, mental, and emotional needs of our students, and because of that, we work with community organizations that target all of those needs as well. It is through these partnerships that school social workers are able to connect parents with organizations that offer these services. School social workers foster relationships with the parent and the organization and follow-up to ensure that these relationships are successful. School social workers provide referrals to ensure access to mental health services from doctors, psychiatrists, and therapists, and I'd like to emphasize ensuring access because a lot of times, it's easy to give a referral, but what we really do is work to make a match for the correct referral, so that we're getting the family to the service that they need, and if they're encountering any barriers at that time, we can work with them so that it doesn't, there's not a holdup in the services that they receive. School social workers serve on community committees to create connections, maximizing the amount of support that they are able to provide to students. School social workers have an expertise, interest, and availability to go out into the community and serve on community-wide boards, planning committees, and task force. And this inter-agency collaboration lets all providers in the community work together, and that in turn translates into resources and services that we can offer to our families. When you have unmet needs, success at school can be a challenge. School social workers are part of a school team that are invested in building successful futures for each student every day, no matter how great the need of the student. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Little, and then after Daniel, we have Gisela McGuire.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniel Little, L-I-T-T-L-E. I'm here representing Nebraska Families Collaborative. The address is 2110 Papillion Parkway, 68164. I'm here tonight both as a social worker as well as the Director of Permanency with Nebraska Families Collaborative to support the proposed social worker initiative. We recognize the sufficient, the significant contribution school social workers have on the well-being of children and families. Nebraska Families Collaborative is a nonprofit agency that provides ongoing case management to all children residing in Douglas and Sarpy Counties, who are currently involved with the Child Protective Services, or CPS. Our mission is to build on child, family, and community strengths so that all children and families are safe, healthy, and thriving. To this end, NFC works with a family to create a community-based, naturally occurring support network. The goal of this natural support network is to provide support to avoid formal Child Protective Services interventions in the future. The school social worker is an integral component of this community-based support system. Children spend a majority of their waking hours in the school system. The school social worker is in a position to provide intense, timely, and needed support to children, which may reduce trauma if we can avoid formal child welfare interventions. While Child Protective Services and school social workers both believe in improving the lives of children in our communities, there are differences that are important to note. Child Protective Services involvement with children and families only occurs once there's been a significant event that warrants a call of the Child Abuse and Neglect Hotline and has been investigated by the Department of Health and Human Services Initial Assessment Unit. This reporting and investigating can create a negative perception on Child Protective Services. School social workers, on the other hand, are seen as part of the educational system, which does not carry the same negative stigma as the child protective system. CPS is focused on overall safety, permanency, and well-being of children involved in formal child welfare system. Assessments are completed, which examine households for current safety threats, the risk for future harm to children, as well as family strengths and needs. School social workers may assess similar items, especially as they relate to strengths and needs, but ultimately, the focus is on addressing presenting concerns or barriers so that children can be successful in the educational system. The National Association of Social Worker, NASW, stated, "School social workers help schools and communities to address such systematic issues as school dropout, adolescent pregnancy, child abuse, homelessness, juvenile crime, as well as emotional and behavioral problems of some students like substance abuse and suicide." When these issues are appropriately addressed, schools can expect increases in academic achievement, graduation rates, and students continuing on a post-secondary education. School social workers help struggling students and families overcome a range of challenges that could limit their future success. If we are to look at future health and well-being of our communities, we need to look at the current health and well-being of our children and families. Numerous studies, especially the Adverse Childhood Experience, or ACEs, has drawn a connection between trauma experienced as a child and negative outcome experienced in the future. We have a unique opportunity with this proposed initiative to positively impact our community by providing much-needed additional support to children during very important developmental stages. Along with my work at NFC, I'm also a master's level social worker. I was fortunate enough to complete my clinical practicum or internship as a school social worker. In this role, I was able to see firsthand the impact school social workers have on children and families. A school social worker is able to look for red flags such as truancy, behavior concerns, or poor economic performance to find underlying issues. This way, we are not merely treating the symptoms, the larger, symptoms of a larger issue which are typically found within the home. By looking at the child within their environment, the school social worker is able to address underlying concerns that may prevent future issues. As a social worker and as a child welfare professional with Nebraska Families Collaborative, I see the significant positive impact school social workers are making in our community. From their work within the schools, a school, the social worker is in a position to make lasting impact by addressing underlying causes of truancy, behavior issues, and academic performance while preventing entry into the child welfare system. This is an opportunity to impact children and families that we must not overlook. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gisela McGuire, and then after that, we have Shane Strong.
My name is Gisela McGuire, and I'm here to, do you need my, to spell my name, et cetera, spelled Gisela, G-I-E-S-I-L-A, McGuire, M-C-G-U-I-R-E, and address 4655 Willett Street. I'm here, good evening, first of all, and I'm here to just give a little information about my experience. I'm a recipient of the Jacobs Academy course that I took about four or five, or during the winter. And I just want to give a little background information about my company and what led me to Jacobs Academy, as well as a few observations I've had now that I've worked, or I've had a chance to work, to be a part of the Economic Inclusion Program, both with the City of Omaha and with OPS. Let me start by just saying, I'm the majority owner of a small startup commercial cleaning business called Vineyard Specialty Cleaning. We offer the following services: final construction cleanup, janitorial services, deep cleanings of commercial properties, and floor maintenance. We are a family-owned business consisting of my two sons, Thomas and Keegan McGuire, and my niece Chelsea Turner. In addition, my brother, who has worked in the cleaning industry for 30 years, acts as our consultant. Each of us contribute very unique talents, education, and work experiences to the business. Our mission is to employ the members of our LLC and to help contribute to employment opportunities in the North Omaha community. I would like to share with you basically how I became involved with Jacobs Construction Academy. Our business was established in October of 2015, and as an entrepreneur, I immediately became aware of the many challenges that I faced. So, I reached out to organizations in my community for consultant services. There's lots of social service programs and consultant services available in the community. The first place I went to was the Small Business Administration. The SBA was a very useful tool to find organizations who provide services to entrepreneurs like me and other small businesses. It publishes a very comprehensive resource guide yearly that gives out information on companies, their names, and description of services they offer. So, I read the 2015 Resource Guide from cover to cover that month, and the month I started Vineyard Specialty Cleaning. The information I learned has led me down this journey. The next person I reached out to was Roger Johnson at Nebraska Business Development Center. He informed me of opportunities that were available to small emerging businesses in Omaha. He then referred me to Maria Partita at the City of Omaha Human Rights and Relations Department. She helped me with the paperwork to register with the City of Omaha as a Terra One business. In addition, she directed me to Jacobs Construction Academy as a resource to learn how to bid construction contracts. Our team at that point had no bidding construction contract experience, and in order for that business to be obtainable to us, we, you know, we had to get experience. So, what we, what I learned in the class, first of all, was construction safety, how to write contracts, estimating, financing, and bid writing. In addition, I learned how to navigate in the construction industry to be able to compete for construction cleanup work. I also learned the process of how to be a subcontractor and bid to a prime contractor. And most importantly, I learned, I was given, most importantly, Jacobs Academy provided the environment for us to meet and foster relationship with prime contractors. So, I want to thank the board, and I want to thank Jacobs Academy for the opportunity that they gave me in that they gave me in my community as far as assisting me in my entrepreneurial venture. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and I apologize for missing up your name. Our next speaker is Shane Strong, and after that, we have Dr. Adrian Petersell.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shane Strong, S-T-R-O-N-G, and my address is 3419 Hawthorne Avenue. I come here tonight to discuss the Yates Community Center. I come here also, I'm wearing two hats. The first one is President of Bemis Park Neighborhood Association. I understand that we're going to be discussing the future of the Yates Community Center, and I would like to reiterate the position of the Neighborhood Association and its members to preserve the Yates. Taking that hat off and putting on my citizen hat, I'd like to say that I personally support the Yates. I love it. I love this part of town. We've got a lot of history around here. And I do citizens' patrols, Sour Creek, all the way to 30th, Hamilton, down to Dodge, and just drive around, you'll see a lot of Save the Yates. We've got a lot of great history around here, and I like to raise it up as opposed to raising it to the ground. So I hope that you will consider preserving that. And also, I wanted to let you all know that I'll be coming here more often. My wife and I just found out that we're expecting our first child, so we're really excited about the prospect of preparing this new school for our child and being a part of that. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Dr. Adrian, and I think it's Peterscu, but is it Peterson? Did I, am I not reading that right?
Madam President, Pet Rescue.
Pet Rescue.
It's the new game that Candy Crash came out with, Pet Rescue.
Pet Rescue, alright, I like it. So if you could spell that for everyone and then give us your address, that would be awesome.
So it's Dr. Adrian Petrescu, that's spelled A-D-R-I-N, and P-E-T-R-E-S-C-U. Let me, and I'm here on my own behalf, I'm a professor of Public Policy and Administration, and I'm glad I follow Shane Strong because I'm here as a visual translator. I need to translate to people what does Save Yates, the signs that you've all seen, what does it actually mean? Everyone has seen these signs. It says Save Yates, but why should we do that? Who or what is Yates, and why should we save it? The signs are jumping at our attention from everywhere. We counted at least 45 of them in California, just between 37 and 36 alone. Yes, Save Yates. Everybody must have heard of this campaign, but has anybody, has everybody? If you walk or drive through Gifford Park Neighborhood, from outside of Gifford Park Neighborhood, you may not even know who the name Yates is. Well, it is the Yates Community Center, currently located in the old Yates Elementary School, that one that closed in 1997. But why save just an old building? What is wrong with replacing this old building with a brand-new school? If this were a graduate class, and I apologize for this mental experiment, were an ideal exercise in strategic planning, we should of course start with a stakeholder analysis. We will continue by drawing the stakeholders' map by interest and power. And when we do that, the next step would be broad and deep stakeholders' consultation while minding especially those stakeholders affected disproportionately high who have a disproportionately low chance of being heard. This is not a graduate class, of course, but we can still mind nonetheless those stakeholders affected disproportionately high by the potential closing of the Yates Community Center and who have the least chance of having their voice heard. Building a new school is great. We have been waiting for this for a long time. It is where we build it that is the problem. Building it where Yates Community Center is would simply make the current center go away. And why would anybody want to do that? Why is the Yates Community Center important to Omaha, to Nebraska, and yes, even to the entire world? In so many ways, the community center at Yates is unique. It offers programming to adults who need to learn English, to refugees, to children after school. It teaches and reinforces community values to many who would otherwise feel excluded or would not have the support they need to integrate in our diverse society. On national news these days, we hear almost every day sad, terrifying news. We all too often hear positions that make us not proud at any, at all anymore about our own humanity. We hear positions which are exclusionary towards others, which make us sound less human and more simply not appreciative and respectful towards our fellow neighbors. At such controversial, sad times in national politics, the Center, Yates Center, is a beacon of hope to so many. The Center should really be in the national media as a model, as a prime example of who we truly are, supportive, embracing of diversity, accepting and listening to all, and even more so to those in need to help to integrate, to feel welcome, to feel included, and respected. This is what we stand for in Gifford Park Neighborhood. This is what we hope that Omaha Public School, the board, can understand and can help us stand by as our core values in our community. It only makes sense. After all, a Nobel Prize winner, Alan Heger, went to school in eighth grades at Yates Elementary School. He went on to discover and develop the electrically conducive polymers, an invention that will certainly mark centuries to come. Richard Floyd, the famed professor of urban planning, found how strong the correlation is between diversity and inclusiveness of a community and how much creative and innovative and thus successful economics for entrepreneurship that community may become. We have in front of us a prime example of that, a place of highly creative, innovative success in the making, an example of what Boston, Massachusetts, Silicon Valley, California, or Austin, Texas are all made of. We are after all, Nebraska, Omaha, Nebraska. A place may be better than all of those combined. Let us keep Gifford Park Neighborhood and Omaha that way, and let us continue to reap the benefits of diversity and inclusiveness over time. And let's build the next 100 years of future history best creativity and innovation you can master, starting right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Deirdre Evans, and after that, we have John Dockery.
Good evening. Deirdre Evans, E-V-A-N-S. I live at 418 North 38th Street, which is up the hill from Gifford Park and the Jaws and Castle Neighborhood Association area. I'm a member of the Jaws and Castle Neighborhood Association, but I am not representing them. I'm representing me. I have been an active member of the Jaws and Castle Neighborhood Association, or the JCN-A, the board, for the last two years. One reason I volunteered, to be honest, is because I don't drive. And this gives me the opportunity to help my community since I can walk to do everything that I do, including picking up trash at Clarkson Park, selling ads for the newsletter, or going door-to-door, asking people to become members. Which is to say, I appreciate when things that are important to me are within walking distance. It would be a very long and dangerous walk to 24th and Hamilton where Kellum School is. What is now easily obtained from the Yates program for our non-driving immigrant residents will then become difficult after it is moved far away to Kellum. It is because of serving on the JCN Board that I have become aware of the many immigrants who do live within our boundaries. We now have two new businesses, the Namaste and Drug Groceries that cater to them. I know how important being near the Yates School is to them, that they can walk to it to obtain its services that will help them become better neighbors and eventually good citizens. When I was going door-to-door to get members, I met a family of a husband and wife and two young sons. The wife was from Thailand and very sweet. I found out shortly after meeting them how Yates had ESL classes, and ran around the corner to tell them, but she knew and already was attending the classes. That made me feel happy about what a great benefit living near the Yates was for her. It's possible that's why they choose to live in the JCN-A neighborhood, and I'm pleased to have them as neighbors. The more I learned about all the good services that Yates was providing, the prouder I felt about having it nearby. I love the historic buildings in our neighborhood, and I was thrilled to learn that the Yates was built by one of Omaha's founding families. I had never known that. My next-door neighbor teaches spatial ed classes there, and it is so exciting every time she tells me of some breakthrough one of her students experienced. And then, and now she can easily go there to teach and come back, so that's... Basically, you don't fix what isn't broken, and you shouldn't tear it down either. Not to mention that six houses would also need to be destroyed as well as Yates building to build a new school there. I know that the JCN-A would be equally dismayed to lose that many residential homes in one swoop, especially when there are now empty lots that could be used instead in a better and safer location. I believe that Creighton University is dedicated to the ideals of education and charity. I am sincerely praying that they will serve both of these ideals by letting go of those empty lots and help OPS continue in its good work at Yates and empower OPS to build a new school there, which is an ideal location for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have John Dockery, and then we will have our last speaker, Carolina Casada.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Dockery, and you spell it D-O-C-K-E-L-Y, and I live at 8616 North 57th Street. I have two things I want to talk about today. First being OPS Human Growth and Development is continuing to fail to engage parents and the public in the important process to choose a new sexual education curriculum. And secondly, that Advocates for Youth, Sense and Sensibility, and ETR's Health Smart Curriculum should be eliminated because they are endorsed, authored, or involved with Planned Parenthood. My wife and I attended three of the meeting, curriculum meetings at Birth South and North West. We found the material there to be overwhelming. OPS asks for input but is slow to reveal what they are choosing or prefer. Hopefully, OPS will reveal to parents and public which curriculum have been chosen for the pilot program and what schools before the pilot studies begin. Advocates for Youth Curriculum was put back in the mix but is clearly one that is endorsed by Planned Parenthood. It emphasizes sexual freedom and not sexual health. For example, in the sixth grade, it defines abstinence activities as bathing together, masturbation, mutual masturbation, laying with one another, and touching one another and more. I ask, how is any of these, especially bathing together, supporting abstinence inappropriate for sixth graders? The superintendent of OPS said last October to 1,500 people that OPS never has and never will be associated with Planned Parenthood. Health Smart is also a curriculum which has ties to Planned Parenthood and is published by ETR, which is one of Planned Parenthood's main publishers. Its author did the revisions for the national standards, which has an advisory board of 18 people, 10 of which are affiliated with Planned Parenthood organizations like Answers, Advocates for Youth, CICUS, FOS, and others. What is the goal of these programs? Setting the bar low and giving kids a green light for sexual activity is not the answer. At a recent meeting of the World Congress of Families, the first in the U.S., attended by people from 60 countries, participants debated many strategies to strengthen marriage, family, and the future of children. MARRI Director Patrick Fagan argued compellingly, what undermines marriage most is the number of sexual partners one has. The percentage of first marriages that are still intact after five years of marriage for men and women whose only sexual partner was each other is 99% for men and 97% for women. However, for women who had one other sexual partner before marriage, the percentage of intact marriages drops to 62%. And if she has had two partners, it drops to 50%. Therefore, chastity before marriage is the single most important guarantee of lifelong marriage. If a girl has her first sexual partner at age 12, she will have 21 sexual partners with a 75% probability of an out-of-weather birth and welfare. The recent OPS phone survey last year got a high acceptance for adding abortion, LBGT, emergency contraception, and sexual identity is because parents thought OPS just wanted to explain these subjects to kids. Planned Parenthood endorsed programs are designed to indoctrinate children to certain lifestyles. Planned Parenthood's goal is to have their sex education programs intentionally internationally and in every school. The state, recently, this, one state passed a bill to prohibit Planned Parenthood comprehensive sex education program, and another chose to prohibit all comprehensive sex education program. They felt that Planned Parenthood endorsing sex education was a conflict of interest since they are one of the world's largest abortion providers. Please be transparent and keep the public and parents informed about what curriculum in schools have been chosen before pilots begin. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Carolina Casada. Is she here? Maybe she's not.
Excuse me, she had to leave because of a family issue.
Okay.
Was late to speak.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. So with that, that's the end of our public comments. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us. So moved. So motion by Ms. Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Fay. Are there any abstentions on the consent agenda? I think the one that's on there was from Ms. Centerwood, right?
Yes.
So, anyone else know, know other abstentions? Alright. So hearing done, roll call, please.
Got it.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
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 Six aye.
Motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to information items. J1A, Committees of the Board Update. So, the first one is Accountability, but I think I'm going to wait until we get to J1B and J1C. Mr. Scanlon, is that okay, just so we can cover that all together?
Yes, yes.
The Budget and Audit Committee will be meeting upcoming here in the next week, and then Communications Met. So you've seen the format item on the Board Agenda for the Action and Information Items. We are working on the, a Board Handbook, which Mr. Ray has received lots of updates for, right? So he's working through those, and we're also working through a calendar that will be kind of a two-year rolling calendar. So we've made some changes to that, wanting to ensure that we're covering all kinds of items for Ms. Farmer and everyone else so that we can be mindful of state champions that we may have, that we want to recognize. So we're working on those things, so hopefully in the next month, we'll be able to bring that back after our next meeting. Policy, we need to get scheduled, and then I believe there was Americanism, so I think
Sorry, still battling the cold. Americanism Met last week, and we actually have gone through a lot this year. We were going through kind of what we've all we've done, and we've done a lot, but for this board meeting, I want to talk to you about our Economics and Personal Finance. And if the board will remember what I, yeah, this board was here, I can't remember, we didn't put it together. Back in 2014, December, we changed our graduation requirements to include replacing one semester of Economics and Financial Literacy with two separate courses, Economics Grade 10 and Personal Finance Grade 12, each once a semester course. This didn't require the number of... This didn't require the number of requirements to graduate to increase, we just reduced the, uh, number of electives by one credit. So with that process, we began looking at new curriculum, uh, and I do want to bury, and there's a lot of people here, but there are a lot of teachers, um, teachers from Bryan, Burke, Central, North, South, Northwest, South High, and Accelerate, and I won't name them all, but Benson, I mentioned that, Benson, um, Central, I think I mentioned, no, everywhere, I guess everybody, um, who looked at everything and helped develop the curriculum. The curriculum was out in two thousand fifteen where people got to review the curriculum, teachers got to review the curriculum, and they came down after a large decision to these couple books that are up here. Um, and so now we're coming back, basically saying, now that we went through this process of having the curriculum out, having the teacher review them, um, doing the actual pilots, if I remember right, we did actual pilots, and we're looking for fiscal impact to purchase the books this year and also next year. Um, the total cost is five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, five hundred and ninety, sixty-eight, six hundred and six, eighty-six dollars and thirty cents. The economic books are four hundred, four hundred and five thousand dollars roughly, and the personal finance books are a hundred and eighty-five thousand. But that's kind of the introduction to it. If there's any deeper questions, please email Matt Ray, and we'll get all this information, we'll bring it back to, for a vote next meeting. Uh, but we just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we're going to be asking for new economic books and personal finance books to match our graduation requirements. Is there any questions about this?
Can you remind me, was that a class that tenth grade and at eleventh and twelfth grade they're required to take, they take it?
Take it.
Both semester, or a total of two semesters?
Yes, total of two semesters. And we didn't feel it was a, a big controversial item, that's why we, I'm giving the update because we've talked about it in two thousand fourteen, there was an update on it from our committee and also from staff in two thousand fifteen, this is kind of the culmination of it all. So if you have any questions about it, uh, there will be, um, training that goes along with it into next year if, if we, if the board approves the purchase of the books, they'll do a Mac Curriculum Day, they'll also do it during the summer. Um, and I think there was some saving in the negotiations, uh, I do want, I have Dr. Kerberg mentioned, because I think it's important.
We've completed the economics negotiations, we started at eight hundred and twenty thousand, we finished at four hundred and five thousand, so we're very pleased with the discounts.
So we're doing good, trying to save taxpayers money. Any other questions?
Ms. Williams?
So, um, considering we just had the, or there was just the African-American History Challenge, and we've talked at this table many times about the cultural perspective of our student body and, and, and our staff as well, and as we're talking about that, have you guys talked as of yet of some culturally updated curriculum? Um, that, that's something that I know I hear a lot of questions about, uh, you know, we have our Native American population, we have our African-American population, has this committee started looking at some updated culturally relevant curriculum for our students?
I'll, I'll jump in real quick and say, first, uh, this committee is designed by statutes, so there's a list of a lot of things that we have to cover, like the next meeting we'll be covering, um, patriotic songs. And so one of the diversity elements that we're going to talk about is lift every voice and sing. So we're going through the statute requirements first. We have had conversations about social studies, um, we are doing some pilot programs with invisible history, making invisible history visible, uh, and embedding that in our curriculum, and, uh, but I just want you to know there's some, there's some statute requirements that we're still getting through, that every year, if you don't know, we get a FOIA request that Matt Ray has to answer of how many times we discussed outlining the statutes, and there's a group of people who make sure that we follow that every year. So we're getting through there, and we are having those conversations, and there's some more in-depth conversations that I'll turn over to Dr. Kerberg and Mr., I'm going to call you Barry on your first name, sorry.
I'll jump in first. One of the criteria of textbook review is multicultural, non-sexist content in terms of pictures, content, examples, story problems. So, uh, we won't look at a product that doesn't reflect our student bodies, so please know that. And then, um, the other thing I'd like to do, as I see Barry Thomas, our social studies supervisor, in case there's a personal finance question, could I ask Delane Havlivick to also come for it? And he's responsible for the Other Text, which is Personal Fin, Finance Literacy, which is our high school book, our senior book. Excuse me, the other one is a sophomore book, so, and I will, uh, since the question was about cultural relevancy, uh, maybe some of the things we're doing with T C I, uh, which is more of a social studies question, uh, that we started working on last year.
Absolutely. Uh, President, stand before the board again. Um, as far as multicultural, uh, information and curriculum and what we're doing throughout the social studies curriculum, we just, uh, most recently last year, just went through and adopted brand-new textbooks, and the economics textbook will be the conclusion of that. But within there, we have, uh, we bought new African-American history textbooks for last year, um, those are consumables, those are being used throughout all of our high school classes. Every one of our, um, every one of our textbooks that we did go through had within its criteria, as Dr. Kerberg alluded to, issues looking at multicultural, non-sexist, uh, images and content. Uh, and that, every last one of them vetted not only by our teachers but also by community members from different backgrounds. As a matter of fact, in regards to Native American, uh, culture, we had actually one night, uh, which we had a public offering where, I believe there were, uh, and this was in my report last year, but I believe there was eight, there were eighteen, uh, people that came from various Native American tribes that came and reviewed the materials and, uh, and met their approval with very minimal suggestions, recommendations, as far as what we ended up finally choosing. Uh, and Mr. Wayne also spoke to the Making Invisible History Visible program that we have in the district. Um, I will send out an email to Mr. Ray, uh, this summer when we have the, uh, the next upcoming, uh, uh, activity, the, uh, the camp, as I like to call it. Uh, but that program has generated a website that has just now been updated by the district and is being pushed out to all the different, uh, elementaries, middle schools, and high schools, so that people can have an understanding of Omaha's history, uh, and its various cultural representations throughout. Uh, also along with that, we've also created some new iBooks. As a matter of fact, we just published our latest iBook that dot, that ties into Making Invisible History Visible, that talks about, um, Jefferson Square, excuse me, Jackson, no, I was right the first time, Jefferson Square, uh, which is a, uh, it's an area right underneath the bridge, right, uh, in between, uh, if you can, it's about a double tree, it's where the interstate is now, but that actually was a, uh, an urban reservation area for Native Americans who had first moved to, uh, to Omaha, uh, that has now since been, uh, taken and useful and repurposed. Uh, but there's, uh, a history there that is tied to Omaha and our Native American presence. We created an, uh, iBook, which is representative of that Native American group, uh, that is now being put, that is now being pushed out, and is actually going to be posted on Nebraska, uh, Nebraska Gov, uh, the Nebraska Education, Nebraska Department of Education's website, and it's also being put in the traveling trunks that we have being put out throughout the district, um, along with the hat, uh, and there's a lot that, that's one.
So, and I, I just asked because there's a lot of, uh, community members, culturally, culture, a lot of cultural questions being asked of us as we have all of these updates going on, and it's not something that, um, the public, the general public seems to be aware of, and so I think this was an important time to hear some of those things. Um, but I would like to, um, as, as we're moving forward, um, maybe some more frequent updates of what's going on with cultural competency in students, so that we are able to, um, talk with parents and families a little bit better on what's going on. And I'm, uh, the work that you do is great, Mr. Thomas, and you know I'm a fan, so, um, I know you're always thinking about those things in advance, um, but it would be nice for us to just get some more information from that committee, so we can share that with, with our families and our stakeholders. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and Dr. Kerberg?
I, I would just suggest we can come back. One of the things the board supported last year was History Alive, Geography Alive, which is teaching the lesson from a culturally relevant view. And so we're training our teachers on that, so that's a very unique perspective that we do in addition to having textbooks that are updated, so that might be a good presentation as well.
Oh, Mr. Snow.
Dr. Kerberg, could we do a demonstration as well? Just a minute during the board meeting.
That is a great suggestion. Yeah, like we kind of talked about in committee, that's a great suggestion.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Wayne?
And this has been one of the more interesting committees that I've been on, um, Matt Ray just gave me a look, I'm sorry, but since I've been on the board, and primarily it was because the first meeting, to go back to Ms. Williams' question, was, um, Mark Snow and I and Mr. Vargas, uh, all said, we want to, you know, embed Omaha history and East Omaha history, we want to come up with a class. And then, uh, staff came back and showed us how that they're already incorporating, primarily from the Making Invisible History Visible, into the everyday curriculum, and then we did approve, I forgot all about the T S, T I C and that. And so it's been a overwhelming, overwhelming committee, I guess you would say, because it's, it touches every aspect of what we do in the school. Social studies is such a big, broad topic, so, um, I think Mrs. Williams' point is right on, and I think in further updates, I'll make sure I mention those things.
Great, okay. Thank you very much. Um, next we have the Student Assignment Plan, and Ms. Underwood isn't here, but she has a typed-up report to give, so I will just read it. School selection has been completed for the last year of the current student assignment plan. The research department is analyzing school selection results and determining the number of students who will be attending a school outside the new partner plan for seventeen eighteen. The board committee continues to promote ongoing communication with families who have students attending schools that are outside of the partner plan for the seventeen eighteen school year. We are doing our best to provide as much information as possible for families to plan for the upcoming changes to transportation eligibility for the seventeen eighteen school year. And I guess I would just add, um, as I've gotten calls from folks, if you're also as board members receiving calls, um, I've just encouraged folks to go to the website and, and the new SAP link and type in their address, and so I've online done that with them while I'm on the phone, to help them understand where their options are for the future, and I think the website is, is pretty impressive, and it allows for a lot of flexibility, so I would just encourage board members to do that. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, um, legislative, I'm assuming we'll cover that when we get to that topic on the agenda. I don't think there's been any construction manager at risk, Mr. Ray, has there? And then, the S S R R Committee has a report.
So, we met, um, in February, um, and we're, we're still, there's still lots of research left to be done in this topic, but, um, we've really been paying attention at public comment and really listening, and, um, the, the purpose of this committee is to really look at magnets and academies and specialty programs, and so looking at dual language and realizing that, that was the majority of, of our conversation, um, realizing that there's a huge need for dual language, um, across our district, um, and I know there's been a lot of, of requests for a dual language, um, in North Omaha, and so we're, one of the things that we are looking at is how can we expand the dual language program, um, across our district, because it's, it's such a great program, and families are really, um, obviously they're, you know, they're trying to stay in their program for, for the students and for their well-being and their growth, and there's so many amazing things that the dual language program can do, but we want to think of not just a particular school, and how can we build this across our district? So, lots of conversation, unfortunately, Mrs. Kenoke wasn't able to be there, there's a lot of, uh, financial conversation to be had about this, so we look forward to, I mean, you joining us at our next meeting. But I think we had a very fruitful conversation. Um, a few of the other things we're looking at are specifically elementary magnets, um, are they still relevant right now for our district? If they are, what, which ones are performing well, which ones aren't, how could we allocate dollars elsewhere at, at magnets that aren't true magnet schools? But we've talked a lot about the Avid Program, um, so there's, there's just a lot of things that we've talked about, um, with this. We've talked about focus schools, the dual language, of course, the specialized, uh, programs, the I B program, the middle-year program. There's still a lot of, quite honestly, research to be finished and also getting those dollars aligned. Mr. Spitbonny has been wonderful in, in trying to, um, get those needs or those requests taken care of as soon as possible, but, as you know, our board, we liked dat, we like data a lot, so we're asking for lots of data in many different ways. Um, but it's, it is becoming a very fruitful conversation, um, and I don't want to talk about a specific schools, but just really looking at the programs, um, as a whole, and how we can best benefit our students in this district. And I don't know if Mrs. Fay would like to add anything?
Well, just that I know that we also talked about, because of all the practical aspects of dual language that, um, can cause it to be difficult to implement.
Uh huh.
Um, from the financial side, hiring enough teachers, um, you need to have a specific popu, uh, population of native speakers to be able to make it work, and that this isn't always practical. So I think we encouraged, um, curriculum and instruction to maybe look beyond dual language as well, that perhaps there are some other programs out there that we aren't implementing at all in OPS that might, um, be more effective in certain schools. So, I know that that was a part of our conversation. Uh, and that's, that would be, you know, my continued caution about just being able to, um, apply dual language across the district and, and expect it to be as, um, effective as it is right now, so, without all of the pieces in place. Thank you both. Um, with that, we'll move on to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Mr. Scanlon.
I guess I'd ask, uh, Matt Ray, if you could scroll down to the consent agenda on the, um, on the open meetings? Matt? Okay. Just a little delay. Okay. I guess I'm, I'm just bringing to the attention of the board and also to the public, um, that there were quite a number of, of, uh, projects, both bond and non-bond, uh, maintenance projects that, that we're doing, and for the public's information, you'll see, like, where it says, uh, order number zero zero two, two thousand fourteen bond program, that's a, that is a, um, project that incorporates the bond dollars, and if you continue to scroll down, because we did some, uh, turf replacement, I believe, on the, uh, on some of the, uh, I think it was at Benson and Central, those are not bond dollars, those are just, uh, general maintenance fund dollars, um, so I'd just like to bring the, the public's attention to that, um, so we can, you know, de-conflict the, uh, the thought that we're spending bond dollars on running tracks, resurfacing, and everything like that, those are not, uh, bond funds. Um, so you'll see when we do vote on the consent, uh, items, that it will be indicated on there that the bid number is, is either bond or just, uh, non-bond dollars. So I think that's important for the public to understand. We do have a number of projects that are starting up this spring that are going out for, for bid and, and starting with, uh, temporary housing, whether it be, uh, portables or the Mills Building, a lot of those are, are starting up, and we should have, uh, better, uh, this spring they'll be bidding and we'll have, uh, more solid, uh, dollar amounts. Right now, they're just projections for the most part, until they, uh, until we receive the bids back. So that is, and, and this spring and summer, there's a lot more of the, uh, major projects, the, uh, the quick, uh, quick-hitting ones that were the fire, life, and safety for some schools that were already up to date, um, those were last summer. This summer, we've got some major renovations, uh, there's Beveridge, there's Crestridge, Joslin, Lothrop, uh, and some others that you can, that you can see that we approved tonight, but just, this is a big time, I think, for the, um, for the bond, as we sink our teeth into, um, a real significant portion, uh, this, this summer, and we'll start those projects, so I think this is a pretty critical time, that we, uh, make sure everything goes smoothly, and, and I think that, uh, at the, uh, Bond Oversight Committee, that Jacobs and the administration are very open about, um, very transparent with where they are, uh, you know, a lot of them are projections, uh, that some, they project to be over, over budget, but they haven't been taken out to bid, so it's kind of hard to solidify it until we get it out, out to bid and, and see what we've got. Uh, Western Hills is another large, uh, project that we've got going this year, so, um, you know, this is, I'd say, the first year, uh, that we're getting into large bond projects, and, and we should all, I'll, I'll bring as much information as I can, and we'll have the Bond Oversight Committee, uh, presenting, but this is, um- But this is, you know, this is a significant building season for our phase in this current bond. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. It is an exciting time, so we'll start to see exciting changes at buildings. I want to remind everyone that we still have one option, or one seat available on the CBOT Committee, so if anyone's interested, please let me know. With that, we're going to move on to J1B, Superintendent Compensation Model. This comes from the Accountability Committee, of which Mr. Scanlon is the chair, so I'm going to turn this over to him at this time, too. And Mr. Ray, can you pull up the attachment?
While he's pulling that up, I'd just like to thank members of the committee that I think is very thoughtful as far as trying to come up with a tool that the board could use to not only, you know, provide compensation based off of performance, not just assigning if we feel that, you know, hey, this was a great year, let's throw X number of dollars at it. This allows us to show the, show the public, you know, these are, we're able, as a board, to set the goals that we'd like to see the district accomplish, and then also set a monetary amount that we think that those goals would be worth, percentages of compensation based off a total compensation amount. And also, you know, I guess, looking at it right now, we've got some qualitative and some quantitative data that we can look at. We've got, in the principal feedback, one of the things, when I think a lot of, a lot of things that I heard when we were coming into, be seated as a new board, was there was some disconnect between the administration and the buildings. And I think the principal feedback will allow us to kind of keep track of, are those things that we're implementing as policy and what we're hearing from the administration, are they actually making a difference in the buildings? We've set, also getting some feedback from the TAC executive directors, and then also the climate survey up there from parents. So those are some of our qualitative feedbacks that we had come up with that we think will help us as a board, just kind of keep the pulse of the atmosphere and environment. And what we've done, we'll get to the recommendations as far as our goals and everything on the next one. But then the quantitative goals, we sat down and we looked at what our strategic plan is and what our strategic goals have been. And so currently, we're judged by student achievement on state testing, so we've got that. We looked at, as a board, we have to decide what percent proficiency increases we would like to see across the school district in the different math, science, writing. And then we'd also had talked about a third grade reading achievement. We'd like to see that as a percent proficiency increase because of all the information we've heard about reading at the third grade level and moving on, graduate success, student behavior, ACT scores. And then we also, again, with the, aligning with the strategic plan and goals, reading achievement gaps between different free and reduced and the different subgroups of students. So this is a tool that, it's flexible year to year, that the board can decide, okay, what do we want the administration and the school district to accomplish this year? What do we want to set as our emphasis as a board, giving the superintendent the guidance in the June timeframe of, okay, here's what our goals are as a board, and, you know, that can change based off the board, whatever the board would like to accomplish. This is what the committee has recommended at this point in time as a starting point, and it is a fluid performance tool based off of, you know, the makeup of the board and the board's desired goals. So that is, that's the tool. And then if you could go to the next, well, let me open it up for any questions. Does anybody have any questions on, Matt, would you scroll to the second page so they can also see the? Yeah, and so there's some additional goals, and like we said, that the different subgroups. And down on the model parameters, what we're looking at is what we've divided up, 100% of the total compensation for the principal feedback weighting, that would be 15% of the dollar amount that would, that again, the board would decide upon. TAC Directors was 5%, Climate Survey was 10%, and then quantitative goal weighting was 70% in order to keep it. That, we do base it off of the data, the hard data, but also keeping an eye on the environment and qualitative feedback. So I'll open it up for questions on the, I guess, on the tool, and then we can talk about the goals.
I guess I just want to add, so the committee members were Mr. Scanlon, Mr. Fargus, myself, and Ms. Williams, just if anybody had any questions on that. And then I also want to thank Research, who went out and really spent a lot of time studying what other districts might be doing, looking at best practices. And so I think the tool that they certainly played a big hand in helping to develop is very unique from a perspective nationally, probably not something that's been done quite like this, from a quantitative, qualitative look. So just want to thank them for all their work. Mr. Snell.
Thank you. My question is about the feedback from TAC Directors and principals. Could you explain, is that a survey? Is that just 1 through 10?
It's a survey that'll be, you know, they'll have the five responses, strongly agree, agreed, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree, and the agree and strongly agree will be viewed as a positive, and the disagree and strongly disagree will be viewed as a negative. And we'll get to, in this next slide, what we had talked about. We're looking for 100% agreement, of course, but what we had set for both the principal, well, all the qualitative ones, the principal feedback, the TAC and climate survey, we had talked about setting a goal of 100% and performance 80% and above, anything below 80%, you would not be compensated. And we figured, we looked at it as a B average, 80% or above. So that's where that came up. But anything, you know, if, and we'll look at an example, but if there's 75% that agree or strongly agree, there would be no compensation in that category. So it would be a survey. And I think that we had looked at some, in the committee, we had looked at some sample questions, and, you know, they just gave us an idea of what type of a survey. And we also talked about that survey being done by a third party. That would be implemented by a third party, so it would not, you know, the administration would have nothing to do with it. Nothing to do with implementing it, sorry.
Mrs. Fay.
So would the questions also be created by the third party, or just the implementation and processing of the surveys by the third party? Because I think you'd want to make sure that the questions were, you know, written in such a way that they were scientifically valid, yeah?
I think we'd have to have some input onto what type of questions, but I don't believe we got into that detailed discussion on who would develop the questions. I don't think that was addressed. So we'd be open to discussion on that.
Ms. Williams?
I just want to say, being a part of the committee, this was definitely a little bit out of my daily element, but we went from not really having a tool to now we have a tool. And so I think that's a huge accomplishment from the committee that we've, there was, you know, some disagree to agree and agree to disagree and all of that. But I think we found a tool that really kind of captures what we really need to measure how well the superintendent is doing. And coming from not having this tool to now we've set up future boards to have a great tool, I think is amazing. And I just want to give kudos, not to just the committee members, but to Research, because they did really bring a lot of great ideas. And I like the fact that we're very strong board members, but even to say, well, we've thought about that, and they always had some rationale to that. So I'm very proud that we have created this tool and something that, as a board, you know, we can sit as a collective group every year and say, okay, what are we going to base this on this year? So it's a tool that is going to change over time, but we really have done a lot of work, and it's amazing, so.
Could you blow that up a little bit, Matt, please? The, this is an example. This is kind of where the committee came up with the dollar amount. It was $25,000 total possible compensation. Again, that's broken down into the different percentages, with 70 being the qualitative, and then the 15, 5, and 10 for the surveys. But just to look at this big picture real quick, and where we got $25,000 is about 10% of the superintendent's base salary. And we decided that, you know, with that large of a possible performance bonus, that we need to set aggressive goals and high expectations. So in this example, you can see where the breakdown is as far as if all the goals were obtained, where that $25,000, the breakdown per section on there. And then, again, these are just hypotheticals, if people have, if board members have problems with the goals that were set and expectations, we can have that discussion tonight. If you'll scroll down, like I already talked about, the qualitative, those are set at 80% minimum. We're looking for a goal of 100%. And then if you'll scroll down to the quantitative with the NISA test score improvements, we went with, what we're recommending as a committee is the 5% increase in order for the maximum amount of the bonus to be earned. If, in this example, as you'll see, if there's a 4% increase, that'd be four fifths of the dollar amount. 3% would be three fifths, and 2% would be two fifths, 1% would be one fifth. And if it was a zero or a negative percent increase, then that would not, that portion of the performance pay would not be paid out. That would be a zero dollar amount. So in this example, they have shown, you know, just hypothetically, okay, there is a 4%, 3, 2, 1% in the different NISA improvements. So that shows you how much was earned in this hypothetical situation. And then you go down, again, to the different categories, when you break it down into free and reduced lunch improvements, and also the different subgroup improvements that, in this example, if you'll scroll down to the next page, I think the total bonus compensation is at 9,000, 9,500 or something, I can't see it from here, but that, in that year, that would be what the compensation, additional compensation to the superintendent, or, I'm sorry, $9,900 would be, would be based off the performance. And I guess I had brought this up when we were talking about the superintendent's contract renewal, that, you know, other school districts around us had thrown a big chunk of money at their superintendent, and it was just based off of, well, he did a good job at this. And they didn't really have a lot to back it up. And if we're going to try to compensate and give a performance pay, I want to make sure that I can, myself and other board members can look at the constituents and the taxpayers and say, hey, this is why we did this increase this year, because we showed great strides, and we have the data to back it up. So, and again, it can change based off the board makeup and the board goals, what they want to set. I think these, we looked at the strategic plan and tried to align them as closely as possible to what we have set out as improvements in the strategic goal. And the 5% increase, yes, it's very aggressive, but we've set the gold standard as far as the gold award lunches, and I would find it very difficult to, you know, bonus out the superintendent at a lower percentage than what we're looking to expect to be rewarded principals and buildings for, you know, a 5% increase in different areas. So I think that's where that number came from. And on top of this, this doesn't mean that we wouldn't need to look at the superintendent's base salary for inflation and for, you know, consumer price index adjustments. That would be separate from this item. Does anybody have any questions, discussion?
So you probably already answered this, but I didn't catch it. On the quantitative goals, you, I was under the impression you said 80% or nothing? Is that only for the principal and director feedback?
Yes, that was just for the qualitative.
Qualitative, sorry.
Yes, because we are setting, you know, you kind of balance it with, you know, what total compensation dollar amount do you want? And then, you know, you want to make sure that whatever, you don't want to just be saying, yeah, every year you're going to be getting a $25,000 bonus. You know, we want to make sure, like, hey, you've got to get a big year to get a big bonus.
So, excuse me, in this last piece, basically, if he, of the 5% increase, if he gets 1%, he still gets, I guess, one-fifth of whatever the total? Okay, so it's not all or nothing?
Correct. It's not all or nothing in those categories. It's just on the qualitative, all or nothing if it's below 80%. So the other, and I guess if it's zero or negative growth, then there's no additional money.
Understand. Thank you.
I just want to mathematically go back to what Mr. Scanlon said a few minutes ago about still that need, so that, so it is kind of, it is complex, because if you left everything in place and the superintendent had exactly the same performance from one year to the next year, and you didn't do an adjustment on base, there would actually be no raise, even though there had been achievement. So that's why it'll be very important to think about how boards going forward would take a look at that, not only from a cost of living adjustment, so that your base didn't get too far out of whack, or your, or if they were achieving the same amount every year, there was no additional compensation. So I just mathematically want to make sure everybody understands that, that the way we set it up was so that, as Mr. Scanlon said, each board could decide whether or not $25,000 was the right amount, and what those qualitative and quantitative goals would and should be based on, whether it's the strategic plan items that were being looked at that year, or if it was to be the same. So I just think that's an important piece to mention of what he just talked about. Mr. Wayne?
So if we just have, if there's just an average superintendent or this model, who, I guess the question is, what is the bottom? If there's just 1% growth, is that okay as a board? Is that what we want? Because we're rewarding that 1% growth across the board with the bonus. And what is the bottom line? Is it, is it we expect 2% growth? We expect, what is that bottom? What did our strategic plan say as far as what growth we're projecting?
I don't know that we specifically... I don't know that we specifically had numbers in there. One of the things we talked about was as we, as we continue to grow, the challenge of getting exceptional growth, you know, will be there because pretty soon you'll reach that place where, um, it's harder and harder to get bigger amounts. And we know that next year, is it next year, the NISA reading is changing and it's very significant change. And I've already had principals say to me, wow, I don't, I, I don't know how this is going to work. And so I know I already have one in my sub-district that's offered to be in a pilot program. So there will be, um, challenges, not necessarily because of the kids, but because of maybe testing or what we're looking at. Next year could be the year that the whole district goes, or the whole state goes to a different 11th grade model. And that could be different for us. So I think there's, so we, we said any growth, um, can be, is a positive sign. We don't want to go backwards, but recognizing that clearly in reading in the elementary grades, we've, we've made a lot of strides, so it will be hard for us to, you know, see 5% growth.
But if the expectation is, let's say a teacher's classroom had zero growth, would that be okay?
Well, then it wouldn't be, it would, there would be no compensation in that.
No, I'm just saying, we evaluate teachers as a district. Let's say their class had zero growth throughout the whole year. Would that be okay for that teacher? Or would we not say there needs to be improvement? We need to have some kind of growth?
Well, I think it depends on the students who were in that teacher's classroom, the conditions in that classroom. They could have had, because it's not a cohort group, they're a new group of students each year. And maybe the students that were in that classroom, um, maybe there were more IEPs, maybe there was more, um, English language learner. So I think it depends on, every time it depends on the classroom. Ms. Williams?
But this isn't a, this isn't just a, I mean, this is kind of a baseline, it's the draft. So as the board, my mic is a little loud. The, we're going to set what those percentages look like every year. It's not just a one and done. We have to collectively sit down and have this conversation of what percentages are we looking for? What are the goals we're, we're expecting of the superintendent? So this is something that we will revisit every year. It's not just, this is where it is and that's where it's going to stay. So, I mean, to your point, if it's not growing, then we need to collectively, or whomever the board at the time, needs to look at this tool and make those adjustments as necessary.
I was under the impression Matt Scanlon said, Mr. Scanlon said that we would have that conversation tonight about whether that's appropriate or not. And that's what I was trying to engage in is, is, is 1% growth determinative or equal to a bonus? I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
I would say if you look up there, you've got, uh, the example of the 1 through 4% growth on those first couple of lines. And, you know, growth is growth, um, you know, and 1%, you're looking at that example. If you can keep scrolling to the right forum, please. It's $218 versus, you know, if you're at 4% growth, $875. So I think that, um, you know, different years are going to, going to bring different things. And you do need to, as a board, we, we and future boards will need to look at that and say, hey, you've got 0% growth in here or you've got negative 1.5% growth. And this, this tool not only allows the board to compensate for growth, but it also allows us on a yearly basis to look at it and say, hey, we're, we're lagging here. We're not, we're not making the strides that we need to. So I think that that, um, you know, is, is 1% growth acceptable? I would say, yeah. Do you want more? Yeah, of course. But, um, I don't know if you, because again, um, you know, as they're talking, a lot of external, um, controls are out there as far as folks that are going to be changing the NISA testing requirements, which are outside of our control. But, um, you know, we have to continue to educate our students as best as, as possible. But I think that some of those, it makes it difficult to set other than a 0%, um, you know, hey, you did prog, you did make progress or nope, you didn't. I think that, at that level, um, you know, the, the compensation dollar amount is, is pretty low if it's 1% as compared to getting up into the, to the higher realm. So I, I think that's where it, um, I think that's kind of where it sets the, you know, you're not getting compensated very much for, for 1%. And there's a lot of categories up there in the qualitative one that you can see. Um, I forget, I think there's close to 10 or more. So the dollar amounts, I mean, you're, you have to show growth across a broad number of different indicators.
Mr. Snow?
So taking that, if we can change the goals every year, couldn't we just leave everything in the green at 80%? And if he doesn't meet that 80%, we can reevaluate, reevaluate this every year and say, we'll switch, we'll move that goal to 4% or move it up?
Well, if you look at, just as an example right there, that 4% increase isn't 80%.
That, that's what I'm saying, but we still reward for a 1%. That's my thing is, what is the percentage that we will say? It has to be 80% across the board, since we already don't know the others.
I think you'd be diminishing, because when was the last time this school district's ever, ever seen 4% growth? I mean, if we, if we showed 4% growth, that'd be one heck of a year. And I guess it's one of those things that we have to develop a, a realistic, um, compensation tool that, um, you know, would I expect that the superintendent would be compensated in, in a year, 20, that $25,000 amount? I would be, um, I'd, I'd be shocked, to be honest. I mean, to show 5% growth across the entire district in all of those different categories? So I think that, um, you kind of have to balance it with, okay, here's just an amazing year that, you know, not, probably not any school district's ever shown and to where we're still compensating for positive movement on the growth side. You gotta, you gotta, I think, balance that in order to make it not a running joke that, huh, yep, I've got a compensation to, a compensation performance pay and, and I know I'm getting nothing this year. Or I'm getting, you know, slim pickings and it's, you know, that would be, I think, discouraging to this superintendent and any future superintendent.
So could we, could we set realistic goals? So if you don't hit the 80%, even though 5% is too high, set realistic goals saying, all right, we want a 3.5% increase and if you do not get 80% of it, you don't get any. I mean, that, to me, it seems like I would, as, yes, if I was the super, I can't speak freely, but if I was that person, I would feel more aggressive to attain that goal than, but I don't know, this is-
So, so if you go to the second attachment on J1, I think C, whoops, I opened it and I don't have it in front of me. That had, that was the performance pay matrix, the goal setting. So that's what we used. That information was the research information that was used to come up with, what we came up with. And still recognizing, like Mr. Scanlon said, that any growth is a positive thing and should be rewarded. But, um, Mr. Wayne?
But no growth is a negative thing because you actually lose grades level. No growth is, is a negative thing. It's, it's not the same. And I guess what, what I'm struggling with is if, if, if the bar is, we expect our superintendent to lead us in a way where we have 1% growth, then to me, that's the expectation set. So there is no bonus for that. You're doing your job. If you get 2%, that's above and beyond what we expect you in your job to do, i.e. requires a bonus. Does that make sense?
Can I, can I just interject really quick? We're, we're not using bonus, we're, it's a performance compensation tool. So I just wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence and making sure, let the public know it's not a bonus, it is a performance incentive.
Then define the difference for the public.
We would need Ms. Neil Sprash for legal on that, I think. So we just want to make sure we're following state statute.
Under the Nebraska constitution, I believe it is not permissible for us to give bonuses to public employees. So you would have to provide additional compensation method to that particular employee through any manner in which, um, uh, the district sets forth. This would be an additional compensation, um, manner that you could provide the superintendent that would be within the parameters, um, of, uh, the law in Nebraska.
And it would come based off of results that he obtained or she obtained that year?
Sure.
So in layman's terms, it's still the same thing. Although technically we have to label it differently. Got it, I understand that. But my, my, my whole point, I guess the conversation I want to have is, what is our minimum goal? And if, whatever our minimum goal is, then he or she meets that goal, I don't think there should be a bonus just for meeting that goal. I don't know what the goal is, that's what I'm asking. If, if we define the bottom side of that goal?
So then if, so what is your, what, what would you suggest?
Well, I would suggest a bottom side goal of 1%. 1% growth and then anything above 1%. I mean, I would prefer 2%, but looking off of our historical data, it'll probably be a 1% at least for next year. Um, so we're talking about 1%, but I think it, it says something different if we say no matter what percentage you get, an additional performance pay. I think a minimum of 1%. If somebody wants to push for 2, I'd echo it, but it doesn't matter.
Mr. Scanlon?
I would just go back to the fact that it's got to be something that can be attainable. And, um, you know, we could, again, you could say, well, I'm not satisfied with 1%. I'm not satisfied with 2. I want to see 5%. I mean, I think everybody sitting here at this table wants to see as big of an increase on a yearly basis, but what we need to do is find something that can, um, be motivational to superintendent and to the district as far as, um, you know, having them be able to get behind something that, yeah, hey, okay, let's, let's see how big we can make that performance pay, um, this year based off of our, um, based off of the results that we get. You know, I mean, you're going to be splitting hairs. I mean, if you got 0% just as that, you know, line that says, you know, hey, improvement, yes, you showed improvement, or you didn't show improvement. And I think that's where the committee came up with 0% being that baseline that, um, you know, we could have discussions over, you know, what we'd like to see versus, okay, the compensation is low if the increase is low. And that's where we, um, you know, we kind of left it at that because if you don't show any growth, no compensation. Uh, if you show one, you get very little. And as that goes up, uh, you see a greater amount of compensation. But, um, you know, as far as setting that bottom number, I, I think we have to make sure that, uh, we don't set that to where, again, this performance, uh, pay and performance tool just becomes a running joke that, oh, we're never, never going to get there. They, they've set unrealistic expectations to where it's an all or nothing thing. And that could lead, um, future superintendents to dismiss, dismiss it as unattainable and, and, uh, not really get behind it.
I'll just echo what Mr. Scanlon said. We spent quite a bit of time talking about wanting to ensure that we, um, could provide some sort of compensation based on true quantitative objectives. And, and growth is important and recognizing as well that those things that are outside of the superintendent's control, outside of the board's control, play a, play a factor in that, whether it's the NISA tests changing, which we know next year could have an impact, um, specifically in our reading. I think this year it's already, there's already a change to eighth grade, something that I, one of the NISA tests that my child came home and told me, wow, it's way different. So, um, and was a little nervous about how it came about just because it was unfamiliar. So I think from that standpoint, um, as Mr. Scanlon said, it's important that we recognize the growth, recognizing that as we get, as we have more achievement, um, it's harder to get some of those bigger growth numbers. But as well thinking about the current superintendent that we have, that we want to compensate, and then thinking about in the future, uh, future boards and wanting to attract, um, a superintendent, making sure that we've put a plan into place that is effective and that is motivational as well. Because I think if it's not motivational, um, it, it's not effective.
So I believe this is on the information item for tonight. Superintendent Evans, do you have anything to add as far as your experience with any knowledge of performance pays or your, uh, your opinion on, on the fairness of, of this model?
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Scanlon. And actually, I appreciate the whole committee. I know, uh, these are difficult topics and you've spent a lot of time trying to figure something out that's fair and appropriate, uh, and that's a challenge. And, and I like your comments about the evolutionary piece of this, that it shifts over time as you look at it and say, well, maybe we see more of a need in this area than that area. And I think that's a real important piece to any kind of tool, that capacity to understand that it's probably going to evolve over time and look a little bit different over time. Secondly, I want to say, this wasn't something I was out actually pushing for, so I want the community to know that. I think it was a board initiative to say to the taxpayers, to the school district, that everybody's accountable. And by the way, I think that's appropriate. And I think it's quite appropriate, so I applaud the board for that, to say, we expect growth. And by the way, just as you said, Mr. Scanlon, I expect growth too. You're right, we all want 5%. And I will tell you, we do use that as the gold standard for our schools. When you hit that 5% mark, we know you've had incredible growth. We know you've done something pretty phenomenal. What we also know is, it's highly unlikely you'll get it the next year. It's highly unlikely. In fact, statistically, they'll tell you, if you get 5% and then 5% again and then 5% the third year, some people would say, we better look at how you're administering that test. Because 15% growth is unusual. Not saying it's impossible, but it's unusual. And so the piece on the percent, 5 is very aggressive. Uh, last year, we had 18 of our 69 schools that met that. That's how aggressive it is. And it's purposely like that. And we still recognize schools, we give them gold and bronze awards for schools to get 5% in one area or 5% in two areas. You've got to have three to get the gold. So we don't say, you failed because you didn't get 5% in all areas. In fact, we gave you, give you a plaque and put something on the wall and say, now, let's go for the gold next year. But they didn't fail. And especially if they had a gold the year before, it's doggone near statistically impossible. So it's, it's more complex than it might look. And I know the committee spent a lot of time looking at that complexity. And I think that's the challenge, uh, as we begin to talk about it in the public, is this thing is challenging. Uh, but as I've said, Mr. Scanlon, as I've talked to him and the other committee members, I, I have absolutely no problem with accountability. If we're not getting better and if we can't demonstrate that we're better today than we were yesterday, and that means data like this, from student achievement data to qualitative data, which I also think has value, uh, I, I think then there's something not going right. And I'm responsible for that and I should be. Because what I'll do, presuming the board moves ahead with this, this will be something I'll show the principals and I'll show it to schools and say, these are the expectations for where I'm at. Because they make expectations too. They have school improvement plans that have stretch goals where they're trying to shoot for 3 and 5%. And so why should I be any different than 69 schools that are busting their tails to make a difference for 53,000 kids, working hard every single day? Why shouldn't I be held accountable too? And why shouldn't it be public? I, I don't have any problem with that. Uh, I do think it needs to be appropriately thought about and evolve over time, and I think you're doing that in the right way. doing that in the right way. I think the trend data piece is real critical, how you look at it over time. And as far as a motivator, for me personally, I mean, I'm, I'm going to work hard every day. I'm going to wake up early and start reading and answering emails and all of that. I mean, that's not going to shift. But I like the accountability piece to it. I recognize that the, the reality is, there, it's almost slim to none that you're going to hit 5% in all those categories, from reducing the achievement gap to all the others. You're going to hit it maybe in some. We will hit it in some, but likelihood of all is, is pretty minimal, to be quite honest statistically. But I'm okay with that too, because how do you set a target that's not high? How do you, how do you do that? How do you set a graduation rate where you're not wanting every young person to graduate? You want every young person to graduate. That's your goal. So, but you do recognize success, just as we do with schools along the way, as they make progress. So, so I think you've done a yeoman's job. Every district I've worked in, we always set goals. When I was a high school principal of a high-poverty urban high school, we set goals. We achieve goals, and I think that's what you're doing here is publicly stating, we've got goals for superintendent too. And this is what we expect to see growth on, and, and you should. And you should. So I, I think you're doing a great job, and I recognize that this is something we all need to kind of come to consensus with, including me. I'm okay with it, especially with the evolutionary piece of it, where you look at it over time. I think that's something we can tell our, our teachers, our parents, our community, our tax-paying citizenry. We expect growth.
Okay. I don't know if there's any other comments. What I would suggest is, as you look at all three of the documents that are on our agenda this evening, if you have specific questions or if you have suggestions for changes, tweaks, if you could get back to Mr. Scanlon, that would be great. And based on the feedback that he gets over the next couple of weeks, I think we'll determine if we need to have another accountability committee meeting to kind of work through that before we bring it back to the board or, or how it looks. So I would appreciate it if everybody could just reach out to him and, and kind of give him your thoughts and then any suggestions you might have. I know we've spent an awful lot of time looking at it, but everybody else hasn't, and so I get where there's a lot of questions. And so if you need further explanation, Mr. Scanlon's spent a lot of time with it, so I know he'd be able to help with that as well. So with that, we will move on, unless somebody has another question, to J1D, Temporary Location for Florence Elementary 2014 Bond Program.
We just wanted to update the board on some planning that we've been doing around the Florence Elementary School project, similar to what we've done in the past for Franklin and Lothrup, as well as Bel Ryan and Western Hills. And this revolves around the utilization of mills during Florence's bond construction, and not only bond construction, but also the construction of the proposed or the planned Boys and Girls Club addition. So one of the things that I do, do want to make sure everybody understands, doing this will result in a schedule change for Florence. So in lieu of the project starting this May and finishing in the August of '17, it would start in May of '17 and finish in August of '18. So that we're doing that, or we're, we're talking through the details of doing that to make sure that the campus doesn't really go through kind of two construction cycles. The bond program's really ready to start. We've been working on the design. We've been working closely with the principal on this plan and the building design. But as the Boys and Girls Club goes through their process of fundraising and planning their component of the building, we felt there was good opportunity with the, with the campus input. We've had PTA meetings, community meetings to discuss what this impact would mean to the overall schedule. Doesn't change any of the scope of work or the finances or any other reason, but it really is a benefit from a quality of construction perspective. It'll allow the project to start in that May and finish in that August, not only for the bond scope, but also the Boys and Girls Club components. So it, it turns it into kind of one construction series versus two, two kind of independent ones. The building principal is here. If there's any questions or if anyone wants any input from this lovely gentleman here.
Ms. Williams.
Well, hello, Mr. Heck. Nice to see you. We go way back.
Absolutely.
I just am curious, I know we've talked a little bit, but can you fill the rest of the board and the public? I just would really love to hear kind of where your building staff, your families, your students are in this conversation. What's the general feel about this project at the school and even how they'll be transitioning out to a building for a year? I just would really like to, your perspective on, on.
Yeah, like I said, we, we had several meetings. As soon as it was brought to my attention, I had a staff meeting about it. We talked about it. As a staff, the general consensus is that they are in support of the move. There are a few that are kind of concerned, more toward about the location of where we're going to the Mills Building. They like our Florence ties. They like being where they're at. They do like the aspect of leaving Florence during the construction time, just to get away from the construction. Bing, I mean, through college, I, I did electrical work and did some phase construction, and I will tell you, it is not conducive for learning as an electrician. There were teachers, teachers would be coming out and they'd say, can you be a little quieter? Yeah. As I drilled a big hole. So being out of the building is what is best for the kids and for the teachers. True, it's in the Mills Building, which has some ups and downs for that. We did also talk with the community. We had an open community night at Florence. I also brought it to our local Kiwanis Club and, and spoke at the Kiwanis Club as well about that transition and what their thoughts were. They had a lot of the same feelings as the teachers. They, they thought it would be conducive for our, our students to be at an alternative site during that year of construction versus two years of construction. And, but they were kind of concerned about where their kids would be going. So we've already been talking with our community and our teachers and our students and families about giving them an opportunity to go see the Mills Building, walk through the Mills Building, you know, see what it's, what it's like when the students are in session, because I, I believe Franklin and Lothrup are going to be there next year, to give them a good visual of what the, you know, what a school day looks like, to kind of ease their, their concerns. So that's kind of the plan as right now. So I would say the majority is supportive of, of leaving the site during the construction versus two years of construction, but with the concerns of moving to, to the Mills Building is their, their only concern.
And what about your students?
Student-wise, they have a lot of the same, they hear a lot from their, their families. So that, that's the same concern. So the, the ones I've talked to that come to me and, and say, we're moving to the Mills Building, they've talked to their parents about, you know, there's that conversation at home. So they have the same concern.
Well, and I just, I bring up the students because I know that they love Florence and they love you, and so I always want to get a student perspective because that's what we're supposed to be advocating for as our students. So, but thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Snell.
So you guys are moving to the Mills Building in 2017-18?
Yes.
Okay. How many students do you have at Florence?
We will have about 268 next year with sixth grade moving on.
Okay. Just wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for sharing that information with us so that we can respond if we get questions from the community. Next item is J1E, Economic Inclusion Plan Update. I think, Mr. Kozart.
Did you put it on the desktop too?
It is, it's already on the desktop. Along with the attachment status.
other distinguished members of the OPS Board of Education and listening public. My name is Carlos Kozart. I'm the OPS Economic Inclusion Project Director and the Accountable Administrator for OPS Economic Inclusion Program. This update is based on a Board of Education request made on 21 November of last year, at which time the Board asked for an assessment updating about 46 or 46 months, one or two, I think was 46 months, which is where we are now. I was being sort of sarcastic there. Assessing both the bond programs, education, excuse me, the bond programs, economic inclusion plan, which is dated 13 April of 2015. And the Board of Education also asked me, asked to hear my vision and strategies for a district-wide economic inclusion program. This evening's update is exactly six months from when I first became administrator with Omaha Public School District. Two things I recall Superintendent Evans stating during my interview were, "We look forward to hearing from the person described on this resume, and the most significant thing that we expect from the person hired for this position is results." This evening, I'm here to provide you with both. This update includes feedback from multiple aspects of the economic, of economic inclusion, including who, what, when, and why the economic inclusion program exists, where it's headed, and how we can get there together as a district. I'll be highlighting some of the strategies, some strategies for successful and sustainable economic inclusion. It'll illustrate both new and ongoing economic inclusion processes and best practices, and provide you with an overview of ideals, an overview of some of the ideals we still have This slide presents the agenda we plan to follow. Throughout this presentation, you'll hear a common theme, which is successful ways for doing inclusive business with OPS. This presentation highlights examples of where OPS has achieved success collaborating both with internal and external partners, i.e. members of the economic inclusion leadership team and community agencies, who will be introduced shortly. You'll hear of several reporting processes used to keep the Board of Education and general public aware of economic inclusion activities and results. An expected outcome from the Board after this presentation is your continued support and professional advice on how we, as OPS, as an organization, can more effectively implement a sustainable district-wide economic inclusion program. Remembering that the primary reason that we're all here is to be of service by preparing all students of OPS for future success. We welcome your feedback and have scheduled opportunity for questions and answers at the end of this presentation. Being that this is an educational institution, let's begin with a quiz. Magic words, right? So if you, come on, I'll be sneaking on the quiz there. If you pair the 26 letters of the alphabet with numbers, and knowledge equals 96%, and hard work equals 98%, what word gets you to 100%? Let me help you out there. That answer would be attitude. Attitude equates to 100%. And a positive attitude is our goal for how we achieve success. Again, we all know that the reason that we're here is to serve the students of OPS. There it is. In December of 2014, the Board of Education amended the Jacobs Contract to re, provide program management services and develop an economic inclusion plan in order to address the Board of Education's economic inclusion expectations. When the Board approved the plan in April of 2015, it included some guiding philosophies and principles. And inclusion was listed as a high priority, implying a paradigm shift for traditional OPS business practices. This is a summary of some of the initial guidance, and I'll just go through and elaborate on just a few. Let's just take the odd numbers. One was to be proactive advocates for economic inclusion. The third one is support student development by partnering with stakeholders, provide learning opportunities and exposure to various career opportunities. The fifth one, be creative and innovative in developing solutions that will increase the participation and development of small and emerging businesses. And last but not least, which should be joy to the ears of the CFO and most, most taxpayers, is to maximize, maximize and leverage existing resources. And I would say, one essential resource, resource is the embedded economic inclusion leadership team that we have here at OPS. And I'll talk a little bit more about that team just shortly. If you're listening during the earlier public comments at prior board pro, bond program updates, to Mr. Scanlon and some of the monthly CBOC, Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee, Committee reports, I think we could agree that the current economic inclusion plan has flourished from seed planted as part of the bond program into tangible outcomes for growing success. Would you join me in publicly recognizing Jacobs with a round of applause for developing an outstanding economic inclusion plan and a foundation for which OPS can transform into a broader economic inclusion program? Jacob, where you at? Thank you. Thank you. This slide just barely illustrates some of the complexities associated with economic inclusion program. We have numerous internal OPS entities, whether it's the executive council, the administrative staff, or the folks who I, as a military veteran, refer to as the boots on the ground, the principals, the teachers, and the students, for which we're all here to serve. Let's do an analysis of just one aspect of, of this model, and it's the box that's identified as process integration. Process integration strategies that we're looking at as part of the economic inclusion program involves processes, products, and people. An important element of any process involving cultural change that is, is that of the organization's leadership team. The Bonds Economic Plan proposes creating a robust, multi-disciplined economic inclusion leadership team, which would be accountable for developing inclusion strategies, overseeing district-wide best practices, and assessing compliance with the policies and procedures that we come up with. That task has been successfully accomplished. Active participation by this team of designated professionals is essential for developing and implementing a sustainable economic inclusion program across the district's broad spectrum of operations. As project director, I chaired OPS Economic Inclusion Leadership Team consisting of Dr. Tony Turnquist, Pamela Coyne, Connie Kanoki, Susan Christopherson, Dr. Nancy Bond, Susan Covey, Mark Warnicki, Warnicki, Sharif Lawary, James Grobo, Pascalitha Mack, excuse me, Gabrielle Mack, Mark Summers, and Galitha Gillespie, all from Jacobs. We likewise had a reach-back capability to bring in other members of the Jacobs Program Management Team and other subject matter experts as the situation may require. The Economic Inclusion Leadership Team will continue integrating best practices responsibly and with due diligence. And when applicable, that team and I will bring before this Board of Education courses of action. And when applicable, that team and I will bring before this Board of Education courses of action for your feedback and decision. As some of you are aware, Jacobs' scope of project management services are limited to activities associated with the bond program. One procedural development since I briefed you last in November was the creation of the Economic Inclusion Division's strategic vision and mission. The primary role of the initial Economic Inclusion Team designated when the bond was signed was to encourage and promote small emerging business participation in the bond program. As you can see from the materials provided to you in E-meeting, those roles and responsibilities have evolved. The Economic Inclusion Division's vision and mission statements are also aligned with several OPS strategic guiding principles, first of which impacting the lives of students. As stated, the first objective of the Economic Inclusion Program's strategy is collaborating with district colleagues on educational programs that provide students experience and stream in other professional services and business industries. I'm happy to report that we're having outstanding success collaborating with organizations who continually demonstrate their commitments by creating meaningful student engagement and learning opportunities. The Economic Inclusion Team members have accompanied me in meetings with decision-makers from community agencies, educational institutions, and private, in the private business sector. The Educational Leadership Team will continue building relationships with stakeholders who share an interest in OPS guiding principles. This slide depicts, this slide depicts, beginning on your far left, one of the AE partners mentoring students at Beverish inside the classroom. It also depicts South High students participating in community activities, as well as OPS staff and community representatives mentoring students at Riconda Elementary. Lastly, as you see on your far right, we're engaged with curriculum instruction assessments and community stakeholders on several initiatives, including Green Infrastructure, the Grange Carver Initiative, and Omaha Step Up Summer Programs for OPS students. Allow me to highlight some successful bond program inclusion tools. The goals of, the goal of process integration is incorporating economic inclusion into all day-to-day business processes. The Jacobs Program Management Team performs this strategy masterfully, whether it's at weekly or bi-weekly program management team meetings, at monthly community bond oversight committee meetings, or at meetings with the AE Design Coordination, at AE Design Coordination or owner, architect, and contractor meetings. There are numerous program management documents where Jacobs, OPS staff, and OPS legal staff have incorporated economic inclusion language. This slide lists some of the processes and forms in their current status. So as you can see on the slide, those items and off to the right that are highlighted in green, that's where we've already been successful in incorporating economic inclusion to either the forms or the processes that we use to select architect, engineering firms, or prime contractors to participate in the bond program. And the two, the two rows at the bottom are where still work in progress incorporating appropriate economic inclusion language. Because the goal of economic inclusion is to go beyond just what we do as part of the bond program, but again, to make it a part of all of our day-to-day operating processes here within OPS. This slide is simple, if there's such a thing, but it depicts the dependencies of internal and external stakeholders and the importance of continuous communications. Everything relating to inclusion begins with and involves stakeholders collaboration with Team OPS, as you see there in the blue circle, whether it's members of the Board of Education, Executive Council, administrative staff, principals, teachers, and students. So as I indicated earlier, this slide just depicts some of the community agencies that the Economic Inclusion Team has been actively involved in, involved with. And as you might recall from all the previous slides, as well as this one, that top, up on the title line, it identifies how the mission that we're performing within Economic Inclusion Division aligns with the principles of OPS, or strategic principles. We have, we've been successful building relationships and enhancing partnerships with community organizations, and those that are abbreviated in the brown are just representative of the Tenor Center of the Midlands, North Omaha Contractors Association, Omaha Economic Development Center, the Omaha Minority Contractors Association, Omaha Small Business Network, Nebraska Business Development Center, MCC's Do Center, both their training facility and staff, and Empowerment Network, as well as, as we heard earlier, Goodwill Industries, just to name a few. There are a few things that are beyond our capability to provide services. As such, we advise small emerging business, small emerging business owners or vendors who can provide such wraparound, those wraparound services such as financial and credit remediation services. Bottom line, we're not marketing for any specific service provider. We simply inform the small emerging business community who has indicated a will and interest in providing the necessary services to make them successful businesses. When I was hired, we were utilizing six locations as plans rooms. Since January this year, that has expanded by three additional no-cost nonprofit organizations listed in the blue box to your right. The Jacobs Academy and Building and Grounds Department also advise and assist small emerging businesses regarding the OPS bond program and other bid documents as they relate to opportunities outside of the bond program. On this slide, I'd really like you to pay some attention, take a look at the documents that were provided to you in E-meeting. The first of which is the Economic Inclusion Log. The Economic Inclusion Log, the Economic Inclusion Log is a listing of about nineteen out of, nineteen out of one hundred and seventy interactions that we've had from a standpoint of economic inclusion with either small business entities and other community stakeholders expressed with an expressed interest on providing wraparound services for an effective Economic Inclusion Program. The second link, come on, come on. The second link is a sample of the small emerging business Tier One and Tier Two membership roster. This sample depicts one of fifty-one, one of a fifty-one-page roster of over two hundred and eighty registered Tier One and Tier Two participants, eighty-four of whom are Tier Ones. It's worth noting on this sheet that out of the Tier Ones that are depicted here, five of the nineteen identified on this page are actual graduates of the Jacobs Construction Academy. An additional twenty-five percent of those nineteen listed on this page are likewise actively involved in bidding opportunities with OPS, both in and outside of the bond program. The third link that I'd like to take you to. Get back. The third link that I, I would like you to refer to in your handouts is a five of a ninety-five-page monthly Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Report. And out of those first five pages, what's really important to recognize here is the commitments that have gone to our economic, to economic, to participants in the Economic Inclusion Program. Over three million dollars of contract commitments have gone to Tier Ones, one million to Tier Two contract commitments, for a consolidated amount of four point three million dollars to Tier Ones and Tier Two business owners. That results in a percentage of eight point three percent. And that was actually the situation as of one of my iterations of putting this presentation together. So I'll just go off my slider, defer from my slider moment, and announce that to date, and it'll be reported in the next CBOC meeting, which is held on the twenty-fourth, our current Economic Inclusion commitment to small emerging businesses is actually eleven point two percent. That equates to over six point six million dollars' worth of opportunities, majority of which are going to Tier One small emerging businesses. Our prime construction partners such as McCarthy's Building Companies at the Beverish Magnum Portables have projected over seventy percent of their work effort going to small emerging businesses. And one else, who has the Indian Hills Project, have committed over thirteen percent of small emerging business inclusion rates. I would think that the program should be commended for the outstanding results and efforts that we've seen thus far. Okay, forgot to hook up the sounds. You can hear my flashbang there. But what this picture, what this picture here depicts is examples of some of the successful outreach and networking programs that we've created for the communities that we've set out to impact. Again, whether it's holding pre-bid walkthroughs or Spanish-speaking-only workshops for our, for the small emerging business owners that reside in South, in South Omaha, or the Jacobs Construction Academy, or just network opportunities that have helped, that have been helped at the Holland Workforce Solution in conjunction with the Goodwill Industry. I stand before you and say that we've made outstanding progress thus far and likewise had the capability to do even better in the future. So my last slide. First and foremost, what I'd like to do is thank so many people who assisted me in preparing the information that's been presented for you this evening. I'll refrain from calling out any names because I'd hate to miss anybody, although everyone's input was of importance. So thank you to you all that assisted in that process. In closing, I would stand by the belief to state that OPS, the OPS Economic Inclusion Division and its leadership team has the capability to either provide or require the professional services needed to implement a district-wide Economic Inclusion Program. And at this time, we'd like to entertain your questions.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry, pardon me, please. Go ahead. I, I missed an important step in the process. I need to bring up the Building and Grounds folks for their portion of this presentation. Hey, there's that sound again. Which would include an overview of some of the ideals that we have in development. So, Building Grounds, hi, I'm so.
Dr. Turnquist.
I just want to point out, the purpose here is to show that it is not only in bond work that we are engaging in economic inclusion. We're also applying it to day-to-day work through our Buildings and Grounds divisions. And I'll just show you a little example of that now, and also the way we are developing a reporting tool using Tableau software so that that will be easily readable for board members on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, Dr. Turnquist. As has been stated, we want to make sure that the Economic Inclusion Program is also in our day-to-day activities, and Buildings and Grounds has been monitoring over the last ten months and tracking some of the various pieces of information on contractors that we've been using and seeing how the small emerging business program has been growing in our own department. Some of the things that we've been tracking is the departments who are contracting work, the schools that the works going in, how we request prices from contractors, either their formal bids or proposals, tracking contractors that are, and their classifications if they're a Tier One, Tier Two, or non-classified contractors, the prices that they submit, and who's being awarded, and their prices. An example, this is an executive summary that's up on the screen now. And I'm not sure that you can read it up there in the far right, but it talks about from the months of May of last year through November, I'm sorry, through February this year, we have had three hundred and fifty-seven projects that we requested prices on. We requested six hundred and thirty-eight vendors to provide us quotes on those projects, and we have awarded two million eight hundred and eighty, two million eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars' worth of total contracts on that number. So, the bar graph on the left side, if that's what's shown here, it shows the breakdown of the contracts by department. So we can track how many contracts each of my departments put out onto the street. The one on the upper right, the light gray represents Tier One contractors, the light green is Tier Two contractors, and the dark green is non-classified. You'll see of the graphics, the Tier One, we requested quotes from one hundred and fifteen contractors, or eighteen percent of our work. Tier Two is one hundred and sixteen contracts, which is eighteen percent of our work. So at least thirty-six percent of our requests or going out and asking contractors to provide us prices have been going to T One, T Two in that ten-month time period. The lower left-hand, if Dave can raise it up there, this graph represents the awards of contracts to contractors that we've been doing business with. Again, the light gray is Tier One, the light green is Tier Two, and the dark green is non-classified. That shows that a hundred and seven projects have been awarded to SEB contractors, equivalent to over thirty percent of our work has been issued to Tier One and Tier Two contractors. And then on the right side, that's the dollars that, that has been with those contracts and committed to the contractors. Again, the same color code, overall, six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars has been contracted with Tier One, Tier Two contractors over that ten months. Of twenty-two point five percent of our dollars spent on contracted work going to small and emerging businesses. That's just a summary recap. I'll give it to Dave, and he'll show you a little bit about Tableau that we've been using to monitor and track our progress.
Okay, yeah, I'll keep it kind of brief, but I know Omaha Public Schools purchased Tableau, and we used it for the Open Book Project. Mark Warnicki came to me with that Excel spreadsheet full of data about small and emerging businesses, and that, that is where these graphs came from, directly from Mark's Excel spreadsheet. So I'm going to switch over to where it talks about the six hundred and thirty-eight total quotes that were put out. Each of those four graphs that Mark described, there's another dashboard for each of those with more detailed information about each of those. Just kind of quickly here. This one up in the corner here shows the total quotes that were put out for each of the areas. The first one being Tier One, second area is Tier Two, and then the third area is the non-classified vendors. Has a reference line here, probably can't read that number, it's probably a little small, but it's showing that seventy- Probably can't read that number, it's probably a little small, but it's showing that 75%, overall 75% of the quotes were returned by vendors. For tier-one, it was 66%. Tier-two, 57%. And then the non-classified, 82%. And I know I was talking with Dr. Turnquist and Mr. Warnick. Actually, I think they were quite happy with the number that actually got returned so far for our data showing 66% for tier-one, 57% for tier-two. So it kind of just gives you an idea of what we can do with data. So I know we talked about you like data, keep it coming. Because I think, you know, with Tableau, we can really do some things with it and kind of give it back to you visually, so.
So it's just a certain example of, of where we're at with Buildings and Grounds and showing you that we're tracking that and trying to reach out to more and more contractors that we can provide them the opportunity for work through our own department, not only the bond program.
So I'm going to let Mr. Snow ask his question, and then I'll ask a Tableau question.
I lost my train of thought, give me a second. So let's, let's go back to the slideshow, I guess. I can't even find it right now. My first question, I remember us sitting here in November, 46 months ago, I guess, whatever, talking about coming back with next, next steps. What, what are you going to recommend for the board? And this presentation didn't say any of that. It just said that we're collaborating with Jacobs. I was expecting that we were going to have a list of everything that we are currently doing. What do you think we should keep? What do you think we should not keep? Because, I mean, we had initiated conversations with a program with an entity and is, their objective was to evaluate that, to see if that's something that we were supposed to do. That's what was my expectations, as well as evaluate the current contracts that we have, as well as that RFQ, RFP, if we were going to send it out or not. And then I don't, the Tableau thing's a little different. I didn't see any, any data or anything concrete that was different that you're doing. It was Jacobs, what are you doing in your capacity for inclusion in Omaha Public Schools? And where do you think we should go? I mean, this presentation for me was supposed to be your vision, and I didn't see any of it. And I'm kind of disappointed. That's just my opinion. Could you, could you elaborate on those three pieces that RFQ, P, the, the initial conversations we had with joining the REACH program, as well as the contracts that we had with entities that were currently, technically, we were paying month-to-month contract, month-to-month, I believe?
Okay, so, as you, as you noted, this presentation did not go through the seven items that were in the RFQ. As I recall, annotating what was the guidance that was put out from President Gunning was to come back with my assessment of the current economic inclusion plan and then my vision for the way ahead for economic inclusion division in the future. I've demonstrated examples of things that we have done since my arrival, some of which were ongoing as they were initiated by the Jacobs Bond Program. But likewise, in this illustrated picturials and provided handouts of events that we've continued on with and plan to continue on with in the future. No, it's not an assessment of, I did not do a, a direct assessment of the contract that we have with a consultant, but as I stated, as my bottom line on my final slide, that the Economic Inclusion Division and Economic Inclusion Leadership Team has the capability to either provide the services that we need for an effective economic inclusion program or can acquire those services with the stakeholders throughout the community that we've established a relationship with.
My, my follow-up question, so with that, is the Economic Inclusion Team you and OPS, or is it Jacobs? Because Jacobs isn't going to be here forever. So what happens when Jacobs leaves?
All right, not a problem.
What is our capacity? What are we going to do?
Here we go. So if you refer back to the slide depicting the Economic Inclusion Leadership Team, the vast majority of which were administrators from different departments throughout OPS. That Economic Inclusion Leadership Team will be in place upon the conclusion of the bond program. We have representation from CIA, from financing the county, building and grounds, equity and diversity, supply chain, purchasing. Maybe I should have read the words that were on the slide, my office, from counseling. So that's the team that would carry forth the economic inclusion program for OPS.
So what's the timeline of the transition from Jacobs to you guys?
This team is already in place. This Economic Inclusion Team is already in place.
So Jacobs is going to stay the entire bond doing this?
One more time, I didn't hear you.
Is Jacobs' role with the inclusion going to be for the entire bond program? All the way 2018 or 19?
They are, they are a member of the current Economic Inclusion Team, so I would say yes.
I'm talking about the position Gleetha and all of them.
I can't answer, I can't answer that. I mean, that's a contract that we have with an individual as a consultant, so I have no idea of the terms of her contract. I can't answer that. I will say that Jacobs' project manager and representatives from his entire project management team or reach-back capabilities that we have, and again, the project manager and currently the Economic Inclusion Consultant from Jacobs are active participants on the monthly Economic Inclusion Leadership Team meetings that we have. And that's been taking place since, I think the first one was in October.
Dr. Turnquist.
To further answer your question, Mr. Snow, Gleetha's role has been, as we announced early on when Mr. Kozart was hired, is to create a transition program so that the Economic Inclusion Plan is fully owned by the Omaha Public Schools going forward. And so Gleetha is still here working with Carlos in that transition program. Eventually, Gleetha will not be here full-time. And Carlos has fully taken over the leadership of that Economic Inclusion Leadership Team and has engaged all of those persons from other departments throughout the district. They will continue to be part of that leadership team. Economic inclusion will continue to be an important element in all bond work. But as we showed you with the Tableau demonstration, we are also migrating that into day-to-day work on small internal projects in Buildings and Grounds, in operations and maintenance and environmental. And so it is become what we promised at the beginning, an embedded, fully formed part of Omaha Public Schools and the way we do business.
So we're not going to bring up the RFQ, RFP things dead, the other stuff in the past is all dead?
I would say that, that's a good question.
I just want to know so it doesn't show up in three months.
Right, no, I would say that all of those categories that were in that RFQ, we're already doing ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams.
So, I don't want to be, I'm, I'm always cautious to be critical of people, but it's, I, I believe this is, we should be critical of the work. And so I actually have a question for you, Dr. Turnquist. How, what is, what is the transition looking like for Ms. Gillespie?
In terms of time?
Yes.
She's still here full-time for a while longer. It will taper off. She will still be present, she will still come back as we meet her. It's still a commitment. I just had discussion the other day with the regional manager for Jacobs. They are still committed to assisting us as needed on an ongoing basis. But she is still here full-time right now. But as I said, that will taper off, and Mr. Kozart has taken full charge of it.
Is there any, do we have any idea of, is it going to be through the summer? Is it going to be through the fall? Do we have any idea as now how long we'll have Gleetha here full-time?
What I'm hearing is through 2017.
Okay. And I, and I guess, this is a very large role, it's a very important role.